May we request, uh before we start the interpolation, may we request shake ability to lead us in the invocation?
Bismillah, Rahmanir Raheem. Hamdulillah, Rabb alamin. The Rahmanir Raheem, Maliki yomuddin. Iya kana'budu wa iya kana'asta'in. Ihdina siraatul mustaqim, siraatalladzina an'amtaa alaihim. Ghairiil maghdubi alaihim laadzu'lin. Amin. Allahummaasalli 'ala sayyidina Muhammadu 'ala alihi sayyidina Muhammad. Allahumma fii hadali yomu nasa'lamu shahraha wa qanakataha ya rabb alamin. Waafiqla li'maatuhibbuwa tarada. Wassalamallah wala akhira. Qufi sayyidina Muhammad. Wa ala alihi wasah diyajma'inabifat. Wa karamikaw alhamdulillah.
Floor Leader.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Magandang hapon po to the Honorable, uh Presiding Officer Attorney, Deputy Speaker Attorney O Maria Sersema and then, uh members of the parliament who are here, Secretariat, guests. Mr. Speaker, we are now still, we are still in the period of, uh interpolations, Mr. Speaker and among the list is MP Ramon Pyang who is joining us via Zoom and he is ready, Mr. Speaker.
Are the, uh is the Chair of the Committee on Local Government ready for to continue the interpolation?
Uh Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Yes, Mr. Speaker, we're ready.
We will now recognize the Honorable Ramon Pyang. You may now proceed with your interpolation on cabinet, on cabinet bill number forty.
Mr. Speaker, it seems that, uh the MP is having technical difficulties but he has signified that he is already joining. But Mr. Speaker, in the meantime, may we recognize MP Alimontaha Babau uh who also signifies his intention to interpolate.
The gentleman from Lanau del Sur is recognized. Is the gentleman from Lanau del Sur ready?
Thank you, sir. I think the MP is already on board.
The gentleman from Lanau del Sur is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, Madam Floor Leader. I just want to point some clarification about the recall provisions of the purpose code. Kasi panigin ko kasi this is very dangerous. Kung hindi natin mahayusito, dahil this could become a, an instrument or a tool by a strong, uh powerful politicians to remain in power. For example, a politician finishes three terms, three years every term and then is prohibited to run, uh the next elections. So what he, what, uh will he do is he will just ask somebody to run for in it, for, and in his behalf. So mangyayari dyan, pag natalo 'yung candidato nya, so he could, uh he could at least initiate, uh recall proceedings so that he will be able to run again. So Kayana, I'm very, very much interested on this. We have to institute some safety nets uh for this provision not to be used by strong politician. It happens already here in the Palawan. But that was the reason why I believe that the, the law was, you know, amended. Uh kasi dati kasi the only, uh requirements to initiate a recall is at least ten percent of the registered voters in the locality on, in an LGU and at least majority of the barangay officials, chairman of, of that LGU. So you can already file a petition for a recall elections. So this is, I believe, very dangerous. It happened in Puerto Princesa. Uh that the, the elected mayor was removed and, uh, by, by virtue of that recall proceedings, kasi nagkaroon ng election ulit at natalo ngayon 'yung nakahupo. So yun ang aking concern, Mr. Speaker. I hope, if I may request the Secretariat to flash the, the ano, the recall provisions of the electoral code so that we can see. Uh if we can do something to, uh to introduce some safety nets uh in that provision, Mr. Speaker. Baka pwede natin i-flash 'yung tungkol dun sa recall proceedings.
Mr. Speaker, I'm not exactly sure if I got the concern correctly. But I, uh, we have in our amended version a provision saying that the chief executive, uh, will not be allowed to, someone who has won the position of chief executive shall not be allowed to uh run for the next lower position, Mr. Speaker. So that, um, there won't be any instance where the, the same person will occupy the chief executive position in view of a, not even just the recall, but disqualification or permanent incapacity of the one who is able to get that position in the next term, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I think the, the majority floor leader has not actually cut my, my, my position here. Uh, I, I would like to repeat, uh, the, my position here about the recall. Uh, hindi ito 'yung sinasabing that the mayor cannot run for, for a lower position. What I'm saying is that after a local government unit, chief executive, for example, a mayor finishes term and then he's prohibited to run for another term. So he will be forced to run for either higher position or even lower position. So after the elections is conducted and then because he wanted to be a mayor again in that locality and then he will now file a recall proceedings so that he will be allowed to run for, for mayor. Kasi the, the previous law covering the recall elections is that the recall will happen one year after the elections and one year before the next election. In other words, in the middle of the, the term, the second year, pwede na mag-recall initiative. So ang inaano ko lang dito, Mr. Speaker, is that dapat tagyan natin ng talagang safety net dito. We have to be very careful because my concern is that this could be used by strong politicians to go back or return because after he finished or graduated in these three terms, the next elections, hindi nasabi din tumakbo. So pag nalaktawan na 'yan at nagkaroon ng elections, he might initiate a recall elections for him to be able to qualify to run another elections. Yun ang aking concern, Mr. Speaker.
So, Mr. Speaker, what I understand is that, uh, the, uh, for example, the mayor is on his or her third term. So, so he did not finish the, all the three terms. Okay? It's on his third term and then there's a recall proceeding which he may have initiated so that the third term will now be interrupted and he will have a fresh set of three terms. Is that, uh, the, the question, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, no, no, that is not my question. The question is that, uh,
May I interrupt? May I interrupt? Uh, I think there's a problem with the, uh, with the audio or the out, the audi, the audio. Uh, I think there's a problem with the uh, with the audio or the out, the audi- the audio. Uh, of uh, the good gentleman from Lanau del Sur. Can, can you, do you have your staff so that uh, we can, maybe you can type in your question? Uh, because that, that's the problem in, in the audio. If you can im- maybe you can improve your, your audio uh. Uh, M P Babao.
I think Mister Speaker, the, the, the floor leader is uh, uh, I think she understood, uh, she understand what I'm saying. Uh, hindi lang medyo nagkakaroon ng uh, intindihan ng konti. Kasi her, her understanding is that, on the third term. Uh, mag-iinitiate na siya ng ano, ng recall 'yung incumbent. No, my position is that. At the, the, the third, I mean, the third three terms, tapos na 'yung say mayor or governor. Tapos na siya, on the next elections, he is prohibited to run uh, in the same position. So, uh, magkakaroon ng uh, elections, tapos uh. After the, the proclamation of the new mayor on the fourth term. Mag-iinitiate ngayon siya ng recall, so that for him to be able to run again. And capture the, the, the power uh, in the L G U. So yun ang sinasabi ko na dapat bigyan natin ng attention na, na ano, not, not, not that uh, hindi pa tapos 'yung term. Three terms, three ye- three years and every term. Walang problema doon. The, the, the L G U, the, the mayor can run, uh, within the period of three terms. But I'm, uh, the question is, what about after the three, uh, the three terms? No? Uh, after that. Mag-iinitiate ng recall, 'yung uh, 'yung uh, strong politician, the former mayor. Para makatakbo siya, kasi hindi na siya prohibited eh. Dahil nangyari na 'yung uh, fourth election siya. Wala ng prohibition. Yun ang sinasabi ko, na concern ko, that we should not, uh, you know, we should be very careful in this. In this particular provision, Mister Speaker.
Anyway, uh, Mister Speaker, I thought I understood it and then I did not, and then I understood it. Uh, maybe it would be clearer, Mister Speaker, if there is a written uh, proposal. Uh, for amendment, so that we can consider that in the period of amendment, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, may I interject just to help out? Just to help out here the.
Okay, uh, we will, we will take into consideration uh, M P Nabiltan. He has a clearer audio.
Uh, I think what the gentleman is saying is, uh, uh. An indirect way of uh, subverting or uh, violating the three-term rule. So pero basta hindi siya pwede ang sumunod na eleksyon, mag- kahit mag-recall yan, hindi pa rin siya qualified. Maging mayor. Kailangan may agwat, may, may gap. Gap ng isang term or kuwan. Pwede siya, pero 'yung recall hindi siya makikinabang nun at matagal pa yun. Matagal 'yung recall, para mahaba proseso niyan. So yun ang sinasabi na, eh, an indirect way. Of violating the three-term uh, rule. Palagay ko tama ba yun na? M P Ali Babao?
Is uh, ang ibig ko po sabihin, after makatapos siya. Makatapos siya ng tatlong term, in the next elections. Hindi siya pwedeng tumakbo under uh, pursuant to Republic Act, kasi diyan siya, hindi siya pwede tumakbo. Uh, ng mayor again. Oh, so gagawin niya ngayon, para makabalik, mag-recall siya ngayon. Mahe will file a recall proceedings. Pag nag-recall, kasi nagkaroon ng eleksyon, nagkaroon na ng latao. No? Magpaprecall siya ngayon for be, for him to be able to run again and uh, capture the power. Uh, in the locality, that's what I mean.
Oo na may gap na ng isang eleksyon, pero kung walang gap, hindi pwede.
Yes, may gap na kasi. So ang gusto ko lang proposal ko, Mister Speaker. Is that in the next uh, term of another, the fourth term, one, one year, uh, three years. Iprohibit na natin 'yung uh, incumbent dating mayor na tumakbo. Wala na 'yung uh, sa sabi niya, okay, mag-recall ako, dahil on the basis of the petition by the people of my locality. They wanted uh, to, to have a recall elections. So ang proposal ko is that. On the next uh, another three years, wala na. Wala na 'yung uh, pataposin mo na 'yung next uh, fourth term. On the fifth term.
I think uh, uh, yeah, uh, in, in the interest, in the interest of time.
Thank you.
Yeah, gentlemen, gentlemen. In the interest of time, may we request the uh, good gentleman, uh, Ali, M P Ali Babao to submit. A language or formulation of his proposal. Uh, as a propo- as a proposed amendment, so that the committee. Uh, eh, or the floor, the floor can consider his proposal, in the interest of time.
I will prepare a written uh, proposed amendment. My second question, Mister Speaker, is that uh, is about the conflict of law. Assuming for the sake of argument, a national law. And a conflict sa du-sating uh, regional law, which of the two will prevail? Uh, the, the B R M law or, or, or the national law? That is my second uh, question, Mister Speaker. Kasi there was a case, uh, in Pagadian City. That uh, a national law. Uh, mandating all uh, tricycle riders, I mean tricycle uh, motor riders to wear a helmet. So ma- ano yan, uh, that is a, a national policy. So in Pagadian City, they pass a city ordinance prohibiting the wearing of helmet within the, within Pagadian City. When I asked the Vice Mayor, who happens to be uh, uh, my guest in, in Lana in Marawi, sabi ko bakit ganun? Sabi niya, M P, kasi kailangan walang ano eh, walang helmet 'yung sa puwerte, uh, aming lugar. Dahil uh, uso ngayon 'yung mga riding and tandem, hindi mo makilala kung sino 'yung uh, perpetrators. So we, we have to, to prohibit within Pagadian City. The wearing, uh, the, I mean, the, the wearing of helmets. Kail- kailangan dito wala. But in a national uh, perspective, eh, bawal 'yung hindi ka mag-ano, mag uh, helmet. So that was my, 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 that is my question now, Mister Speaker. Which of the two will prevail? Because there is now a con- conflict between a national uh, law and the, and a, 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 uh, local uh, law. Ano ang dapat masunod dito?
Mister Speaker.
Yeah, the Chair is ready to answer your question.
Yes, Mister Speaker, uh, with respect to the Local Governance Code. I believe that it is the Local Governance Code that will be passed by the Parliament which shall uh, prevail. Uh, the national law may also uh, be applicable uh, in a supplementary manner, uh, Mister Speaker.
Okay, so thank you very much, Mister uh, Speaker. Kasi the reason why I ask, I ask this uh, question. Because uh, for as long as, my belief is that for as long as we are passing uh, a measure, a legal measure. Uh, that is not contrary or violation of the Constitution. I think it's, it's legal for that matter. We can pass any law, even if it is uh, a violation of national law, for as long as it is not violating the Constitution. Wala sa akin ang, sa tingin ko, walang problema para sa atin. Yun ang aking uh, uh, tanong. Now, number three, last question, Mister Speaker. Kapag okay na itong uh, konflikto. Meron ba itong retroactive effect, Mister Speaker?
No, Mister Speaker.
Meron ba itong retroactive effect?
As I said, Mister Speaker, no.
The answer is no, the answer is no.
What?
The answer is no retroactive effect.
Ah, okay, so, so itin sabi nun, kasi I, the reason why I ask that question, Mister Speaker. Is because of uh, the sharing. Revenue sharing, as explained yesterday, about our natural resources. Kung walang retro- uh, retroactive nito. Uh, this is about the, about Lanau, Lake Lanau. Na- nagbigay ng uh, uh, power, uh, sa National Power Corporation. And now uh, sold uh, to, avoid a screw. So ang sharing, hindi mali na when it was signed. So kung walang retroactive nito. Uh, wala tayong magagawa, kung ganun na wala ng, wala ng share ang uh, B R M at ang Lanau del Sur. Dung sa income na estimated at one billion a day. Dung sa six uh, uh, power plants controlled by the, by private company, now because it was sold by N P C. So yun lang ang aking katanong, kung walang retroactive effect niyo, wala tayong magagawa. I don't know, with our legal luminaries, including the deciding officer. What can we do to save uh, the, the, the late, no, from uh, this uh. You know, 'yung uh, pag uh, use ng uh, ng private company, tapos. They are not giving a, a share uh, of the income to the people of Lanau del Sur.
Mister Speaker, the prevailing law now. Mister Speaker, the prevailing law now, uh, for example, on the matter of shares in. Uh, national taxes would be the A R M M law, uh, the. The R A nine zero fifty-four. So there is also sharing, and the computation is based on that law, Mister Speaker. Once we enact this, uh, and if there's a deviation from that formula, it will now be the. Uh, formula under this law that we will pass. But at the moment, until we pass that law. It is the sharing formula that is provided are, under R A nine zero fifty-four, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, I understand that uh, the revenue sharing, uh, as far as Lake Lanau is concerned. Wala ho, wala hong, uh, it was not protected by virtue of Republic Act, uh, ninety six, uh, zero six, no? Wala, wala ho eh, kasi wala, hindi magalaw 'yung uh, as far as the revenue. Of Lake Lanau, the, the income derived from the take, uh, as a result of the six power plants. Wala hong malinaw na usap dyan na, uh, uh, duna R A nine oh six, na in uh, kung mayroon share talaga o wala. In fact, uh, and itong B R M now, Republic Act eleven zero five four. There is no speci- uh, specific provisions that will say, although. Although the, I understand that all the lakes within the B R M is now turned over to, to the B R M. But uh, as far as the revenue, the income uh, derived. By the uh, private companies operating, the power plants. Wala hong malinaw na sharing, uh, para sa ating uh, sa, sa Bangsa Moro. Wala po.
Yeah, uh, uh, Mister, uh, M P Babao, I think the, the Chair has answered your question. Can you please move uh, uh, forward with your next question?
Yes, wala na ho akong uh, wala na ho akong itatanong. And then uh, thank you very much for giving me time to participate by raising these three issues. Thank you very much.
Uh, may we remind M P Ali Babao that if you have uh, any proposed amendment. You can submit your proposed amendments to the, uh, to the Chair of the Committee or to the Secretariat. So that it will be taken into consideration during the period of amendment.
Thank you very much, isaala po.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh, the next to interpolate is Member of the Parliament Don Loong.
The gentleman from Sulu is recognized. The debonair gentleman from Sulu is recognized.
Thank you very much, uh, uh, to our Speaker and Madam Majority Floor Leader. In the interest of time, I will go uh, direct to my questions and I hope to be able to cover all the four books. Um, in, in this interpolation. Um, I will uh, begin with uh. Uh, although some of this might initially be uh, covered by the previous uh, speakers, but I will just breeze through this. Under section two Declaration of Policies, uh, when we say mandatory, um, as regards public consultation. Can we um, just project section two D? Section two D, when we say mandatory, um, the implication of not doing it. Will have what kind of impact? Will this not be restrictive to now, national government agencies? Will this not become a basis of red tape?
Mister Speaker, uh, I think that was already answered yesterday. Uh, we invite the good gentleman to, um. To. Read the provision, uh, because it says it's only consultation, Mister Speaker. So while the act of consulting is mandatory. Um, as we mentioned yesterday and the other day, the, there is no need for an approval. Uh, or an agreement, uh, for these programs and projects to be implemented, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. In section six, uh, it states that a local government unit may be created, divided and merged. Will it be possible to uh, simply state that a municipality? And uh, or a barangay may be created, because that is the only L G Us that the Bangsa Moro. Uh, can create?
Recording stopped. Recording in progress. Uh, two days ago, uh, we chose to use local government unit, uh, in the first part. Because it talks about the act of creating, creation, division, merger, and abolition of boundaries. And then in the second part, then we have to make a differentiation between, um, the Act of Parliament. Uh, which is through a law, which will allow the Parliament to create, um. Barangays and municipalities. And on the other hand. The Act of Asanggunean, Sangguneang Panglusod and Panglalawigan. Which can have the effect of creating, divi- dividing, merging, or abol- abolishing barangays. So it's a matter of style, Mister Speaker. Uh, we do not also want to be redundant in the way we uh, write the provision, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. The next is under section thirteen. Will it be possible to include airports and seaports? Because we, we have started to rename airports and seaports. Under section thirteen.
Uh, the way I, I understood the, um, discussion in the Parliament pertaining to a proposed resolution, I think. For the renaming of uh, an airport, uh, there has to be another step. No? It's not just within the Bangsa Moro government's power. Uh, from what I understood. It's a, an even, it's even an international body that has to be uh, consulted. Uh, for the change of the name.
Uh, thank you, Mister Speaker. Under section fourteen, uh, regarding local public holidays. In the last, uh, s- part of the paragraph, can we state, um. That of the respective L G U, to emphasize that the holiday only refers to the respective L G U.
Um, we will read the proposed amendment, Mister Speaker. So that we can consider it uh, during the period of amendments.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Under section eighteen. As regards fees and, and charges, if we could also uh, consider, um. Stating that it is subject to such guidelines and limitations as the Congress may provide. And consistent with the provisions of book two of this code. We will uh, provide the proposed amendment in the proper time.
May, may we be uh, clarified as to what section we're referring to, Mister Speaker?
Uh, section eighteen.
The numbered section eighteen, the one that. The numbered section eighteen, the one that's uh flashed uh right now, Mister Speaker?
Okay, um anyway, we will uh just provide the proposed amendment. I think there's a, a difference in, in my list.
Yes.
So we will proceed, Mister Speaker, to Section thirty two.
Section thirty two in, yeah, original thirty two on the left or on the right?
Uh to the right.
Okay, the numbered thirty two.
Uh if, I would like to uh be uh informed if this refers to the environmental aspects only, which is a preceding section, the prior consultations.
Section prior?
Um the section prior to thirty two re- refers to the environment. Uh Section thirty one, I think uh refers to uh their ecological balance. So does Section thirty two refer to ecological balance or on a general note?
I, I think uh Mister Speaker, it talks uh it may relate to ecological balance because there's reference to uh Section twenty six. I think that's still the original Section twenty six. But it's also uh on general matters um which are, which may be consequences of the programs and projects because the section also refers to Section two C, which was the matter that was raised earlier. And that one does not cover only uh ecological balance, Mister Speaker.
Uh can we flash Section thirty two uh, uh Mister Speaker? So there, therefore, our interpretation of Section thirty two is that it refers to all projects and it says no project or program shall be implemented by authorities unless consultations mentioned um in two C and twenty six here of are complied with and prior approval of the Sanggunian. Um are we sure that this refers to all projects, Madam Speaker? Because the gravity of that no project seem to pertain to environmental damage as uh reflected in thirty one. Uh I think we should be very clear because uh the, and the, the next sentences actually refer to environmental uh impacts. Because if thirty two will apply to all projects, we have to reconsider uh, Mister Speaker because is, it will impact uh a lot of national projects that is being implemented in our area.
Well, Mister Speaker, this is the same provision that you find in R A seventy one sixty and also even in M M A A twenty five, which was the law passed by the A R M M, Mister Speaker.
Uh yes, but did that uh refer to uh general uh provisions, Mister Speaker? Or to the entire, or, or only to Section thirty one?
For R A ninety one I seventy one sixty, it's exactly the same except for the last portion uh which um pertains to displacement. But exactly the same, no project or program shall be implemented by government authorities unless the consultations mentioned in Section two C and twenty six here of are complied with and prior approval of the Sanggunian concern is obtained. That's R A seventy one sixty, Mister Speaker. In R A, in M M A A twenty five, which was prevailing or which was passed uh during the A R M M, no project or program shall be implemented by government authorities unless the consultation mentioned in this code are complied with and prior approval of the Sanggunian concern is obtained. There is no mention of uh ecological balance, Mister Speaker. So it pertains to all projects, Mister Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Mister Speaker. Um under forty G, um as regards uh um disqualifications,
Section forty three?
Yes, I think this has extensively been discussed as well. However, I, I would like to uh.
I think it's on the mandatory eh uh uh training, uh Mister Speaker. Is it, is that correct?
Forty G is uh related.
G, okay, sorry.
Forty G, okay. So it has two, two scenarios. The first scenario is one cannot run to a relative that is already elected or sitting. And the second scenario is um one cannot run together with a relative within the second degree. Mister Speaker, um while the first one has already a precedence as regards the S K um bill that provided for this anti-dynasty provision, the new provision of the Bangsa Moro is tho- to include those who are uh still going to file. So in the first part, the Comelec had required representation stating that they're not related to any elected uh official in that, in the S K, for example, or in the L G U. In our proposal, how do we uh require the representation? How do we uh practically implement this? What kind of statement will the um one filing his or her certificate of candidacy represent? Can a person represent and say, I am not related to somebody who is also filing in the same position? Because one will only know after the filing of uh, of candidacy. And number two, who then decides that uh one will take precedent over the other?
Uh Mister Speaker, I think there are three scenarios here, not just two. Uh the first one being um there, that there is an incumbent and a relative also wants to run in the next uh term. Uh in which case, the one who is incumbent will be given the right to run while the relative will not be allowed to run. In the second uh scenario, Mister Speaker, um no one is incumbent. Both of them are new candidates, um so there is no incumbent. Together with the third uh scenario, Mister Speaker, where uh both of them or all of them are incumbents, the solution is not to allow all of them. So there is no one among the uh pros- the candidates or prospective candidates who will be allowed to run, uh Mister Speaker.
Um can I um try to rephrase it if I understood it correctly? So in the case where two or more people related by affinity or consanguinity files, then all of them will be disqualified to run?
If they are bo- all in, not incumbent official, yes.
So um.
And if, and if all of them are incumbent, the same solution, Mister Speaker.
Okay, itagalog ko para maintindihan ko po, no? So, magfa-file ako at magfa-file din 'yung uh ilagay na meron akong halimbawang half-brother or half-sister na magfa-file.
Mm-hmm.
Or ang lolo ko magfa-file din. Sabay-sabay kaming tatlo nag-file. Hindi namin alam na kami ay magfa-file. Later on na sinabi ng Comelec na, uy, nag-file kayong tatlo. Therefore, you are all, uh all three of you are disqualified.
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Okay. In that case, Mister Speaker, kung ako ang incumbent at may kalaban ako, ay, tatakbo si Mister A. Hanap lang ako ng isa sa mga kamag-anak niya. Bigyan ko ng ten thousand para mag-file. Automatically disqualified na siya. Would that be possible scenario, Madam Chair? Uh Speaker?
Uh Mister Speaker, I think everything is possible and uh especially for uh candidates who may want to win so much. They can uh make all the scenarios, no, work for them. But the idea here, Mister Speaker, is uh first, we have to have a solution to that scenario, which is not contemplated in the first paragraph. So the second paragraph um provides a solution to a scenario where all of them are not incumbent or all of them are incumbent. Um and the idea is to force the family to talk among themselves and uh choose who among them would run, uh Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, it is in the nature of man to conflict with each other, ahit mag-asawa, mag-kapatid. And clearly, uh ever since time uh began, you cannot by consensus agree, even magkapatid. Na lahat tayo ay maga- that is in the ideal world. Uh anyway, my point, Mister Speaker, is that this might run contrary to the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights, that we are depriving people to run just because they didn't agree.
Mister Speaker, as we mentioned yesterday, uh voting is a right, but uh the public office, their right, there is no right to run, Mister Speaker. It's a privilege and it can be regulated by law. And anyway, Mister Speaker, what would be the alternative uh solution? If we are, if we want an anti-dynasty provision and we just leave it to the first paragraph, there would be no uh, and we can always circumvent that prohibition uh in the two other scenarios, Mister Speaker. And as we mentioned, the idea is really to force the families. If they are conflicting, then they can agree that one will run for this term and then the other one will run for another term.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, for the clarification. And I was hoping that there will be some uh because in the science of policy, number one, we must consider the unintended consequences. Number two, the practicality. And number three, basis and rationality for policy. So I was hoping that maybe there is a logical policy to select whichever. But anyway.
Well, Mister Speaker, if there's a proposal, we will gladly uh accept it and consider it for amendments, Mister Speaker.
Yes, uh on, on this aspect, Mister Speaker, I think it is enough that we are prohibiting um, we are prohibiting uh somebody who is already related to the incumbent to run because uh that already is in line with the S K law. But to go beyond as to disqualify all uh who are related and not because of their um, their fault that they're disqualified, then it might be challenging. Anyway, I'll move to the next, Mister Speaker. Um as regards uh not being able to run in a lower position, Section forty I. So the incumbent chief executive cannot run for a lower position. Halimbawa, ikaw ay mayor, hindi ka pwedeng tumakbong vice mayor or governor, hindi ka pwedeng tumakbong vice governor. Is that correct, uh Mister Speaker?
Uh that is correct. Mister Speaker, can you flash the specific?
Section forty I.
Okay.
So um and the reason being is that uh para hindi ma-circumvent ng law.
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Mister Speaker, for Section forty three, mandatory training. As regards mandatory training, it states that um they are already disqualified from, they are dis- uh disic- disciplinary action and disqualification. Um can we actually disqualify an official who has not yet assumed office, Mister Speaker?
It's the disqualification from fight, from running, Mister Speaker. This is for the next term, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, Section forty three, if I read it right, deliberate failure to attend the said training shall constitute sufficient ground for disciplinary action and disqualification. Such disqualification shall continue until he has undergone such training.
Okay, thank you, Mister Speaker, for uh the good gentleman uh pointing this out. I, the idea is really to apply the disqualification uh when he or she runs for the next term, Mister Speaker.
So, Mister Speaker, it will become a basis for disqualification on the next term?
That is correct, Mister Speaker.
So it means, Mister Speaker, that there is no remedy for somebody who did not train and they are forever banned and uh at least in the next term and punished for not being able to train?
Well, it's, it's uh disqualification for running in the next term.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. So then there will be a man, an amendment to this by the uh committee? Um the next, my next uh question, Mister Speaker, is uh term of office starting on noon of twenty twenty two, Section forty eight. I understand that the barangay elections is set on December twenty twenty five. Um is it okay that we're mentioning all local elective officials um starting from noon June thirty uh when the, the law currently does not synchronize the barangay and the local elections?
Well, I I think the idea, Mister Speaker, is uh there, the term is just three years including uh for local elective officials of the barangay and the Sangguniang Kabataan. So the start of the term for these barangay officials will have to be in October twenty twenty three. And uh the three-year term will be three years after, which is twenty twenty six, Mister Speaker, for the barangay.
So the, the June thirty only refers to the, the time where uh the, the three-year term is referenced? It doesn't state that the term starts on June thirty. Is this correct, uh Mister Speaker? Because I'm confused with the, with the wording. Um unless we put uh except for barangay officials, which is already there in the, before it was crushed out.
Uh Mister Speaker, I believe there's a ruling, a Supreme Court ruling, Makalintal versus Comelec, which says that um the succeeding B S K E, the barangay and the Sangguniang Kabataan election shall be held on the first Monday of December twenty twenty five and every three years thereafter, uh Mister Speaker.
Yes, I agree, Mister Speaker. That's why uh I took note of that December uh twenty twenty five, which is not June thirty, Mister Speaker. So I am confused.
Mister Speaker. That is correct. So the uh for the barangay and Sangguniang Kabataan uh uh officials, uh the term would still be three years, but the start of the term will not be uh the same for the other with the same, with the other elective officials, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Section fifty one, temporary vacancy in the local o- office of the local chief executive.
Section fifty one.
It states that um when there's a temporary vacancy, an O I C will be appointed and in no case shall be, or I mean designated, in no case shall be more than three days. Can we show the three days in the projector, please? Three days. Now, in terms of practicality, uh is this three days um observed? What is stated here is that after designating for three days, then the next higher rank political officer can immediately assume without need of any uh other action from the C uh L C E. My question is, in the practical aspect, is this being observed? Because if it is not, then why don't we extend it to maybe one week or two weeks? Because in most cases, the mayor, the governor, uh they do travel for more than two weeks or one week. But if we pass this, then there might be conflict where the vice mayor or the vice governor will immediately assume, even when there was a designation because the. even when there was a designation because the governor or the mayor traveled abroad for two weeks.
Uh Mister Speaker, I think what we've done here is really to reflect what is
One minute suspension.
The other members may take your aside for a while. Uh the circulator and the chair can continue the circulation.
Session resumes. We will now continue with the period of interpolation. The interpolator may continue.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. May I request the Secretariat to please flash section forty-three on the mandatory training. Just to be clarified, Mister Speaker, section forty-three on the mandatory training and capacity development. So ibig sabihin kung ang ah local barangay or does this, Mister Speaker, does this refer only to the ah S K or to all the barangay on the barangay officials regarding the mandatory training?
Mister Speaker, it covers all elective officials.
Okay, so all elective officials. Pag hindi sila nag-training, hindi na sila pwedeng um tumakbo ulit. And Mister Speaker, ang requirement is ah they will be trained by the Bangsamoro ah local government academy? Is this correct, Mister Speaker?
Yes, Mister Speaker, ah the local government academy or any accredited service provider, Mister Speaker.
Ah Mister Speaker, can we have an idea of how many locally ah or accredited service provider ah we are speaking of? Is this by the civil service or by the local government ah academy?
Ah Mister Speaker, we don't have any yet because there is no requirement ah on the course that we are proposing, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, I think it is very important to specify because the certification of the Bangsamoro Local Government Academy or the accredited service provider will spell the difference between the right of suffrage and ah the right to be ah voted upon by the um eh hindi na po sila pwedeng tumakbo ah as mentioned kanina.
For the immediately pre- ah succeeding term, Mister Speaker.
Yes, Mister Speaker, kaya nga po, very important. Malaman natin ano ba 'yung aside from L G A, is this civil service? Or pwede 'yung ah kahit saang training center dyan sa sa Maynila?
Ah Mister Speaker, ah we do have um in the succeeding provisions guidance on ah what kind of ah what is the course about? And in the, I believe that currently there are some accredited service providers for courses that are offered to newly elected officials, but this is not it. But if we look at that, it can be an academic institution like I think N C P A G ah is one accredited service provider, D A P is one is another. And there may be others who may be interested ah so long as they comply with the requirements that may be provided in the implementing rules and regulations, ah Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, it says here barangay officials. And therefore ah it pertains to the barangay chairman, the kagawad, S K chairman, ah S K kagawad, treasurer. Um well, at least the these officials. Do do we have an idea of how many ah we are speaking about that must be trained before they can actually assume? Um compared to the manpower of the Bangsamoro Local Government Academy?
Mister Speaker, that is the reason why we say there should be accredited service providers because the local government academy may not be able to cater to the needs of everyone who will be required to undergo this training. This is not just for the barangay, but for, as I said, all elected local officials. They are not required before they sit ah or assume office, they will be required to undergo this training during their incumbency, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, can we put a clear definition of how many hours we are talking about? Because ah some can give a training for one hour, half a day, or it can be two weeks.
Mister Speaker, I believe that can be provided in the implementing rules and regulations. Ah there are um succeeding sections, Mister Speaker, that would ah guide, no? The um matter of that would give a guidance on the matter of how many hours and how this can be implemented, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, considering that ah they will not be allowed to run anymore, ah are we considering this as a penalty? And if it is a penalty, for what offense? Is this ah are we considering not participating in a training as an example of um grave misconduct? Or gross neglect of duty or serious dishonesty? What level of ah of violation did they do? And is it proportional to the penalty that we are ah providing, ah Mister Speaker?
I think if it's ah requirement provided under the law, ah it may fall under ah neglect of duty, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Ah in the interest of time, I will ah ah just ah hope that ah that can be clarified. Ah but compared to the penalty of not being able to run in the next election, I would be more comfortable to just allow them to assume office after they have undergone the the said training for ah practicality purposes. Mister Speaker, ah just go, may I request for section thirty-one? Before we ah proceed to the others, under section thirty-one, regarding the ah duty of the Bangsamoro government agencies in the maintenance of ecological balance, if we can just um correct the term um may cause pollution, climate change, because the climate change term is so broad. Um if it can be ah characterized by, for example, ah that may cause pollution exacerbate climate change. But we will provide the amendment later on, but the point is it should not be ah climate change per se.
We'll ah consider the proposal, Mister Speaker, at the ap- correct time.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Um the under section fifty-one, so ah we have clarified that already, that ah the designation of three days, is it okay? Even in practicality, it goes beyond that?
Well, Mister Speaker, ah if we go to R A seventy-one sixty, it's actually the vice the next in rank who should be taking over ah during ah temporary vacancy. But in actuality, um it's really someone who is designated by the local chief executive. And therefore, we have accommodated that, ah but we've put a limit and ah we think that three days would be ah ah is enough, yes. Ah but we we should also take into consideration that there is a ne- someone who is next in rank who should have that opportunity to ah assume the responsibilities albeit in a limited capacity ah during such temporary incapacity of the chief executive.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. For section fifty-four A, um can we proceed to section fifty-four A? Where ah temporary vacancy due to failure of election. Ibig sabihin hindi natuloy ang eleksyon at sinasabi dito that ah ah an O I C will be designated and that O I C is a local official. Can we be apprised ah who is the local official? Sino ang local official na i-appoint sa probinsya or sa munisipyo kung hindi natuloy ang ah local elections?
I think, Mister Speaker, that is given ah that discretion is given to the the M I L G, Mister Speaker.
Yes, Mister Speaker, ah but ah with the the situation is hindi natuloy ang provincial election, so walang governor, vice-governor, board member. Wala, kung sa munisipyo, walang mayor, vice-mayor at councilors. So the M I L G will appoint a local official. Can we know ano ang
Continue.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Um may I request the Secretariat to please uh flash uh section forty-three on the mandatory training? Uh just to uh be clarified, Mister Speaker, um. Section forty-three on the mandatory training and capacity development. So ibig sabihin kung ang uh uh local barangay or does this. Mister Speaker, does this refer only to the um S K or to all the barangay? On the barangay officials regarding the mandatory training?
Uh Mister Speaker, it covers all elective officials.
Okay, so all elective officials. Pag hindi sila nag-training, hindi na sila pwedeng um tumakbo ulit. And Mister Speaker, ang requirement is uh. They will be trained by the Bangsamoro uh local government academy? Is this uh correct, Mister Speaker?
Yes, Mister Speaker, uh the local government academy or any accredited service provider, Mister Speaker.
Uh Mister Speaker, can we have an idea of how many locally? Ah or accredited service provider uh we are speaking of? Is this by the civil service or by the local government uh academy?
Uh Mister Speaker, we don't have any yet. Because there is no requirement uh on the course that we are proposing, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, I think it is very important to specify. Because the certification of the Bangsamoro Local Government Academy or the accredited service provider. Will spell the difference between the right of suffrage. And the right to be uh voted upon by the um. Eh hindi na po sila pwedeng tumakbo ah as mentioned kanina.
For the immediately perce- uh succeeding term, Mister Speaker.
Yes, Mister Speaker. Kaya nga po, very important. Malaman natin ano ba 'yung aside from L G A? Is this civil service? Or pwede 'yung ah kahit saang training center diyan sa sa Maynila?
Uh Mister Speaker, uh we do have um in the succeeding provisions, guidance on. Uh what kind of uh what is the course about? And in the, I believe that currently there are some. Accredited service providers for. Courses that are offered to newly elected officials, but this is not it. But if we look at that, it can be an academic institution like I think N C P A G uh is one accredited. Service provider. D A P is one is another. And there may be others who may be interested uh so long as they comply with the requirements that may be provided. In the implementing rules and regulations uh Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, it says here barangay officials. And therefore, uh it pertains to the barangay chairman, the kagawad, S K chairman, uh S K kagawad. Treasurer, um well, at least the these officials. Do do we have an idea of how many uh we are speaking about that must be trained before they can actually assume? Um compared to the manpower of the Bangsamoro Local Government Academy?
Mister Speaker, that is the reason why we say there should be accredited service providers because the local government. Academy may not be able to cater to the needs of everyone who will be required to. Undergo this training. This is not just for the barangay, but for, as I said, all elected local officials. They are not required before they sit uh or assume office. They will be required to undergo this training during their incumbency, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, can we put a clear definition of how many hours we are talking about? Because uh some can give a training for one hour, half a day, or it can be two weeks.
Mister Speaker, I believe that can be provided in the implementing rules and regulations. Uh there are um succeeding sections, Mister Speaker, that would. Uh guide, no? The um. Matter of that would give a guidance on the matter of how many hours. And how this can be implemented, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, considering that uh they will not be allowed to run anymore. Uh are we considering this as a penalty? And if it is a penalty, for what offense is this? Uh are we considering not participating in a training as an example of um grave misconduct? Or gross neglect of duty or serious dishonesty? What level of uh of violation did they do? And is it proportional to the penalty that we are uh providing uh Mister Speaker?
I think if it's a requirement provided under the law. Uh it may fall under uh neglect of duty, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh in the interest of time, I will uh uh just uh hope that uh that can be clarified. Uh but compared to the penalty of not being able to run in the next election. I would be more comfortable to just allow them to assume office after they have undergone the the said training. For uh practicality purposes. Mister Speaker, uh just go, may I request for uh section thirty-one? Before we uh proceed to the others. Under section thirty-one. Regarding the uh. Duty of the Bangsamoro Government Agencies in the Maintenance of Ecological Balance, if we can just. Um correct the term um. May cause pollution, climate change, because the climate change term is so broad. Um if it can be uh characterized by, for example. Uh that may cause pollution, exacerbate climate change. But we will provide the amendment later on, but the point is it should not be uh climate change per se.
We'll uh consider the proposal, Mister Speaker, at the apo- correct time.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Um. The under section fifty-one, so uh we have clarified that already, that uh. The designation of three days, is it okay? Even in practicality, it goes beyond that?
Well, Mister Speaker, uh if we go to R A seventy-one sixty, it's actually the vice. The next in rank who should be taking over uh during. Uh temporary vacancy, but in actuality. Um it's really someone who is designated by that local chief executive. And therefore, we have accommodated that, uh but we've put a limit and uh we think that three days would be uh. Uh is enough, yes. Uh but. We we should also take into consideration that there is a ne- someone who is next in rank. Who should have that opportunity to uh assume. The responsibilities albeit in a limited capacity. Uh during such temporary incapacity of the chief executive.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. For section fifty-four A. Um can we proceed to section fifty-four A? Where uh temporary vacancy due to failure of election. Ibig sabihin, hindi natuloy ang eleksyon. At sinasabi dito, that uh uh an O I C will be designated. And that O I C is a local official. Can we be apprised? Uh who is the local official? Sino ang local official na i-appoint? Sa probinsya or sa munisipyo kung hindi natuloy ang local elections?
I think, Mister Speaker, that is given uh that discretion is given to the. The M I L G, Mister Speaker.
Yes, Mister Speaker, uh but uh with the the situation is. Hindi natuloy ang provincial election, so walang governor, vice-governor, board member. Wala, kung sa munisipyo, walang mayor, vice-mayor at councilors. So the M I L G will appoint a local official. Can we know ano ang selections ng local official? Sino-sino ba ang local official na? Tinutukoy natin sapagka- wala rin namang nai-elect pa?
Uh the appointive officials, Mister Speaker.
Appointive officials.
And under paragraph C, uh it should also be based on the principles or principle of merit and fitness, Mister Speaker.
Yes, Mister Speaker. Um but can we be apprised uh to prevent conflict in the future? Ano nga ba ang choices, halimbawa ng uh ng M I L G? But I think magkaiba po 'yan, dalawa 'yan. Kung probinsya, ang chief minister. Kung ang munisipyo or city, ang M I L G. So can we have a list of who are the local officials that we are talking about? Just to be clear and hindi maging basis of conflict uh in the future when this happens?
Well, the idea is uh there is a failure of election and it's now June thirty. And nobody has qualified, so the M I L G in order to prevent a vacuum may. Point a local official, can be the. I don't know, the administrative officer if it's.
Uh when we.
Uh who will be an O I C mayor for the meantime, Mister Speaker.
So we refer, Mister Speaker, to a local official within the L G U?
Uh I think that was already answered, ideally yes, Mister Speaker.
So, we are talking about appointing a local official. Who are permanent then employees of the L G U. At eto 'yung pwedeng mga provincial planning, provincial eh. Uh accountant, auditor, uh yun po ba ang tinutukoy natin? At hindi line agency ng region? Kasi pwede po nating ilagay na local official of the all L G U concerned para medyo mas klaro. Kasi kung L G U official. Kahit sino po yon.
So, Mister Speaker, I di- I did not get the last part.
Ang ang tanong ko po.
The option is.
Uh lo- um when we say local official. Halimbawa po, no? Hindi natuloy ang municipal elections. So, saan manggagaling ang local official? Manggagaling ba siya sa loob ng munisipyo?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Yes, okay. So baka pwede sa amendment lagyan ng L G U official of the respective L G U. Para po klaro na hindi siya manggagaling sa uh baka 'yung secretary-general ng B T A. Ii-appoint as a uh as mayor, O I C mayor.
Well, I think, Mister Speaker, it says local official.
Or or halimbawa, ibang local official po. Halimbawa, so we're not referring to the line agency official? Halimbawa iyong. Uh sino ba? Municipal agriculturist?
But the idea, Mister Speaker, is upon devolution, these officers will be local officials, appointive officials.
Okay, so this does not refer also to the M L G O O? Does this e- exclude the munic- municipal local government officer of the M I L G?
Uh from what I understand, Mister Speaker, the M L G O O will not be a local official. Because even with devolution, the local government operations officer. Would still be under the uh ministry of the interior and local government.
Mister Speaker, can the municipal planning officer of one municipality be designated as O I C of another municipality?
Yes, we agreed earlier that it will be from the same L G.
Okay, so we just hope that that can be amended to state the uh the respective uh. The respective uh L G U and at least on the records of this parliament, it also uh states that. When the merit and fitness is defined as, Mister Speaker. Can we explain when we say designated on the basis of on the principle of merit and fitness?
I think we have uh standards, Mister Speaker, uh under uh civil service law. Uh rules and uh regulations.
So meaning the one with the higher merit and fitness will have um higher chance of being appointed, Mister Speaker? Or is it a political decision by the chief minister or M I L G?
I think, Mister Speaker, the uh M I L G will have to choose someone who will who. He or she thinks would be able to carry out the functions of an O I C. Uh for the time being, Mister Speaker.
Uh Mister Speaker, um and and for the province, will the M I L G be the recommending official?
I think it covers all uh vacancies, Mister Speaker. From province, city, or municipal.
Yeah, and it is for the purpose of uh explaining the prohibition that they will not be related within. Uh is that correct? Fourth civil degree of the recommending and appointing authority.
Uh Mister Speaker, may I be enlightened as to what section the good gentleman is referring to? In relation to the appointment, because this is just a designation, Mister Speaker.
Okay, okay. So uh I would just uh uh move to section sixty-one, Mister Speaker, on the quorum. Sixty-one, on the quorum, it states that having been elected and qualified will be the basis of quorum. Um are the sectoral representatives uh who are appointed? And not elected included in the definition of quorum?
Mister Speaker, they will be elected.
Only the elected?
The sectoral representatives will be included in the computation of the quorum because they will be elected, Mister Speaker.
Um.
Under the amendments, Mister Speaker.
So all sectoral representatives are elected?
Except for the indigenous peoples, I think there would be accommodation as to how they. Uh choose from among themselves the representative in the Sanggunean.
So uh on the case of the I P, will that will they not be included in the definition of quorum? Being appointed the sectoral representatives?
Well, right now, Mister Speaker, it would seem that the amendment says they're all elected, but uh. There was a manifestation earlier, uh yesterday, from M P Mendoza that they should be allowed to. Um undergo a process that is be- within their uh traditional. Uh ma- practices, Mister Speaker.
In which case, my concern, Mister Speaker, is only to just add that there are appointive um members. Who can be uh who can then be included in the reference of quorum?
I think yes, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Uh counted.
Now, for sixty-one D, Mister Speaker. If we would read it, it says Sangunean members who failed to attend for four consecutive regular and special section. Um sessions. Will not be included in the uh counting of quorum, but there's no more mention about being suspended. So are we saying that that provision? No longer has teeth and there is no such suspension after four absences?
Sorry, Mister Speaker, so this contemplates of uh this answers the question of whether. Of what is the basis for counting the quorum, so we're just excluding those who failed to attend the four consecutive. Uh four consecutive sessions, whether regular or special, and those who are on preventative suspension, Mister Speaker.
Yes, Mister Speaker, but the the original section D uh is actually a penalty clause. Which defines those who didn't attend for four co- regular sessions are preventively suspended. Which is now absent in the amended section D. So my question, Mister Speaker, is that technically, we have already uh deleted the penal clause of the four absences.
I think it's in another provision, Mister Speaker. This is just the quorum.
For that clarification, Mister Speaker. Now sixty-three D. On the uh issue about um filing of cases on officials, sixty-three D. And the the term there is that. When they believe that a fair and just resolution is not obtained, how do we measure or um. Rationalize this, Mister Speaker? What is our basis to say that they believe that there's no a fair and just resolution? That they could immediately proceed to filing it with the chief minister?
I think, Mister Speaker, then the complainant will have to show. Uh and justify the filing with the office of the chief minister. And show that there is either a conflict of interest or that the case will be rendered moot. If we they don't they're not able to get the decision from the uh highest level. Or that uh it is going to be. Uh they will not be able to get a just resolution of the case.
In this case, Mister Speaker, the chief minister will act in a quasi-judicial capacity. So who will be doing the decision and pending the decisions, Mister Speaker? Who will be doing the hearing on this?
Uh there is going to be a hearing officer. I think uh that person is mentioned in another provision. But the chief minister is also the office of the chief minister will also. Uh is also mandated to issue uh rules and regulations pertaining to this power, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Section one oh nine, composition of local development councils. The mandatory member. From uh the I P. So uh. My question is, when we when we say I P, is it only non-morrow I P? Or to the marginalized moro I P?
Uh we have taken out non-morrow, Mister Speaker, meaning it would cover. Uh those who are native inhabitants, uh and that may cover those who ascribe to the. Bangsamoro identity and those who do not, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. So section one one five on the secretariat. Um if it is possible to also include the um treasurer and accountant. In the development council, to include the the accountant.
In the secretariat, Mister Speaker. This is the secretariat of the uh local development council, Mister Speaker.
Okay, uh I think uh my uh my recommendation is more on the entire council. O- on section one to eight, Mister Speaker. One to eight. So we have defined um. We have provided that there will just be ad hoc committees within the peace and order councils. Of the province and city and municipality to address redo. And uh. To settle disputes. So uh Mister Speaker, uh when we say redo, it's already uh um. When the issues have already been elevated. But does it mean, Mister Speaker, that we will no longer provide for mediation mechanisms? Within the municipality, city, and provincial level?
Uh Mister Speaker, there's still the katarungang pambarangay. And for as long as the conflict is uh within the jurisdiction of the katarungang pambarangay, that can still be. Uh a platform for solving disputes. This one contemplates of unescalated, as mentioned, uh conflict that has escalated to include other. Uh members of the clan and uh that may no no longer be viable, it may no longer be viable to. Or even legal to have the conflict lodged in the katarungang pambarangay. So this is an option, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Section three two three.
Uh what section, Mister Speaker?
Uh sec- section three two three, local finance committee.
Okay, that's book.
It's an already in another book, Mister Speaker?
I think still book two, no?
Two, yeah. Uh three two three.
Uh financing?
Yes, local finance committee. Uh. Okay, I think it's in the original uh section three two three about local finance committee. Can we type local finance committee? Local finance committee. There. The local finance committee composed of the budget treasurer, budget officer, if the um. If the accountant can also be a member of the local finance committee.
Well, Mister Speaker, this is uh copied from what is provided under the national local government code, Mister Speaker.
Well, thank you, Mister Speaker. Um under section um. Four three five, Mister Speaker.
Or the original four three five? Or the renumbered?
Uh I think uh can we look at the four three five that is uh renumbered? Yes. And it. So the two hundred is no longer there? Um if the two hundred is no longer there, then uh um uh it's okay, Mister Speaker. Uh if we could go back to uh section one six nine. Under section one six nine regarding fisheries. So uh this includes uh purse sinners, Mister Speaker? Uh does this uh contemplate the inclusion of the purse sinners? As we know, in the basuta. We have so ma- uh much aquatic resources. Pero hindi naman taga doon ang nag uh ko-collect, so. Uh I I just want to be assured na our municipal uh L G Us are provided the power. To uh uh to provide fees.
Mister Speaker, I think um the purse sinners are um. Are usually would not be found within uh municipal waters, Mister Speaker, so that may go beyond the. Uh jurisdiction of municipal governments, Mister Speaker.
So, Mister Speaker, where where will we find uh where will the Bangsamoro government? Or the Bangsamoro people be able to tax? Um 'yung mga nangingisda sa Bangsamoro waters?
Mister.
Nabili 'yun billion.
Mister Speaker, if these um boats and purse sinners um. Do were if they operate beyond the municipal waters, they may be still covered and if they are still covered or. It's still within the Bangsamoro waters, then uh this would be covered by the revenue code, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, 'yung under number three, Sangunean Bayan of the same article, it states that three tons or less. But I think the purse sinners are not uh um part of that. And it also states that exclusively within the Bangsamoro autonomous region. Um does that have implication when we say exclusively because? There's a very thin line between the national waters and between the uh Bangsamoro waters. So ibig sabihin, pag hindi exclusive sa Bangsamoro waters, ay hindi na covered ng uh ng provision na ito?
Uh this pertains to the issuance of license. By the L G U, so some may. Uh if it is not, if it does not fall here, it may be covered by uh the revenue code, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Section three oh three, under credit financing. It states stabilizing local finances as a basis for um. For getting credit finance by the L G U. So what do we ac- exactly mean by stabilizing local finances? Under uh section three oh three. The general policy, public investment. Uh yes, section three oh three, general policy.
Okay, I I think it contemplates of a situation where uh there is deficit in the in the local in the funds of the L G U and there may be a need to um enter into agreements with uh lending institutions and.
So uh if it is just for a P P P, Mister Speaker, then they cannot loan? Because then the stabilizing local finances will be a condition sine qua non to uh getting a loan. What if they are in good financial stability and they want to enter into P P Ps for economic development? Anyway, eh at least it will be noted.
Yes, I think um it's not just for because I was asked earlier uh regarding the stabilizing effect or the purpose. But there may be other purposes, uh Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Section three three one, budgetary requirements. Under letter E, it provides uh no less than twenty percent of the annual tax allotment shall be for development projects. Um if I remember right, Mister Speaker, there was a proposition by Minister Bides uh that was approved by the committee on providing for five percent of that twenty percent for the maintenance of uh local roads. It was already approved in the committee, so I don't understand why it is no longer there.
In a in another law, Mister Speaker?
Um it was in the deliberation of the uh it was.
Of the committee?
Yes.
Uh we will check, Mister Speaker, because this is the documentation of the discussion.
In fact, I remember that uh the proponent, Mister Speaker, was the one who did the mathematical formula of converting the one percent N T A to five percent of the twenty percent.
Okay, Mister Speaker, we will look into the um documentation of the discussion of in the committee level, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh I'd just like to note also that we um that's why I pushed for one percent road maintenance because we did also push for one percent for senior citizens, one four percent for P W Ds and one percent for the local council and protection of children. Um did we have any rational reference to push for this three percent in the total N T A, Mister Speaker?
Uh Mister Speaker, I think tho- those um allotment would also fall under the twenty percent, Mister Speaker. And we can make a more detailed uh listing under letter E, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. And uh if I remember right, I was also hoping that one percent would be allocated or one percent of the N T A be allocated for the barangay justice, Mister Speaker. But then um I will proceed to book three, Mister Speaker, for uh in consideration of time and uh proceed to the few more sections. Uh under section four hundred, Mister Speaker.
Four hundred.
Uh uh may I ask uh the good gentleman, uh how many minutes do you?
Uh I think this will just be um uh a li- a little more than five minutes to less than ten minutes, Mister Speaker. Depending on the answer of the.
We will we will give you the floor.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Section four hundred, revalidation of barangays.
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Um what is the mechanism of this? Uh considering that uh the land survey showed that out of the one point five million hectares, there's a very big discrepancy in in the survey. How will the M I L G uh undergo with this, especially in terms of land area and boundary disputes?
Yes, uh Mister Speaker, this pertains to barangays and uh under our law, under B L G C and seventy one sixty N M A twenty five. The requirement for barangays would only pertain to population, Mister Speaker. There's no land area requirement, Mister Speaker. But the um in answer to the question, it will be the M I L G that shall uh undertake the revalidation, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh in section four one five, we provided for the authority to carry firearms for barangay officials. Um is this not already provided under the law that that they must have the L top and the permit to carry?
I think, Mister Speaker, that would uh.
Four four one five? Mister Speaker, under four oh four oh two, four four one six, composition of the barangay. Four one six? Composition, um we refer to uh mandatory representatives from the I P. Does this only refer to the non-morrow I P or to include marginalized I P?
Uh if if it does not distinguish, Mister Speaker, it covers uh both.
So for example, Mister Speaker, in Sulu or Basilan, where there are the sama badjau they will be represented in this barangay?
Um provided that they comply with the requirements, Mister Speaker, that there's uh the number of their representatives in the Sangguniang would not be more than fifty percent.
And this would be also applicable in the municipalities?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker.
And the provinces and cities, Mister.
Mister Speaker, four one nine, on the barangay secretary, it lists so many responsibilities. Mister Speaker, are barangay secretaries um regular government employees with regular salaries?
Yes, Mister yes, Mister Speaker.
And uh are they regular employees that is covered by the civil service? If we look at it, they have one, two, three, eight very heavy responsibilities.
Um well, Mister Speaker, they their service would be considered uh government or service.
Their service will be considered government service. Mister Speaker, do they will they have mandatory contribution to the G S I S?
No, Mister Speaker, right?
No, although we provided that they will have insurance. So what kind of insurance are we uh anticipating here?
Well, Mister Speaker, I think uh if we can look at that specific provision.
Anyway, this comment, Mister Speaker, in general, for lack of time, refers to all the barangay official, the secretary, and the treasurer. They are not regular employees because they don't have G S I S. And uh our proposal here uh gives a cap of in section four uh four oh five. Can we proceed to section four oh five, um Madam Speaker? Eh ma- Mister Speaker, um it states that from five thousand to maximum of grade fourteen, which is thirty three K for a barangay official. I wonder for a barangay official in in Cotabato City, will uh forty four thousand suffice? Can it not be higher for uh barangay officials to be paid? A salary, wh- why did we cap it to S G uh fourteen? Can it not be twenty?
Uh well, in fact, Mister Speaker, this is already a step forward considering uh it's not even provided in the national law, Mister Speaker.
So we are providing them a salary grade equal to S G fourteen. However, we are not still regularizing them because they will still not be allowed to contribute to the G S I S.
Because, Mister Speaker, the funds for the payment of uh honorarium or salaries would be taken from the uh funds of the barangay. Can be higher, provided that there uh would be enough funds in the coffers of.
Mister Speaker, but we provided a ceiling of not more than.
Um I mean from five thousand pesos, Mister Speaker, from the minimum.
Mister Speaker, the work of a barangay chairman, especially here in Cotabato City, uh is very heavy. Baka namang pwedeng iconsider in the amendment to increase that, no? Eh and number two, kung pwedeng magcon- mag uh mag contribute na sila ng G S I S because I I interviewed a lot of the barangay chairman here in Cotabato and yun yung sentimento nila after nine years na pagiging barangay chairman, wala man silang G S I S eh napakabigat na kanila ang trabaho. But uh for lack of time, again, I will uh I will proceed in uh four seven six uh local income in the creation of a municipality, four seven six. Um when we say local income, uh Mister Speaker, are we referring to the era of the barangay? Or are these locally generated uh?
That that would include both, Mister Speaker. I think the succeeding section also clarifies the uh requirement in terms of income in another section, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Now proceeding to the uh next, under article five oh four as regards the cooperative development officer, we have amended the the provision in the bangsa-moro to include cooperatives and social enterprise authority. So will this not be cooperative and social enterprise um uh officer?
Uh yes, Mister Speaker, that can be included in the nomenclature.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Under five four five, uh qualifications and duties of tourism officers eh it is only optional. But maybe because of uh the fact that we are pushing for more uh economic development, we can reconsider this in the amendment. Now, going to my last uh few three questions, under under the devolution, uh Mister Speaker, the national government had provided executive order one three eight which is the full devolution requiring all L G Us to have a devolution transition plan. Is this devolution aspect under um article or section five eight four um aware o- of that E O one three eight?
Well, Mister Speaker, uh the same executive order says that the bangsa-moro is exempted from that from the effective eh from the uh provisions of that uh executive order and that we may have our own devolution plan. Uh considering the fact that we are looking at uh a local governance code, then we we provided the guidance and the specific powers that will be developed to L G Us, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, the national provides for a growth with equity fund. So in that case uh we will not the bangsa-moro will not be part of that growth with equity fund provision of E O one three eight.
Well, uh the same E O which was issued by the national government says that the farming is exempt, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh and the last uh point, Mister Speaker, under section five eight seven. Uh under five eight seven, it provides the implementation of section forty three. It provides for the implementation of section forty three and forty five G not applicable for a period of five years upon activity of this code. So uh can we flash that provision? So forty um it forty three and forty five G. Now forty three talks about the mandatory training. So we will not implement that until after five years. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, Mister Speaker, to give more time to the uh local government academy and the M I L G.
Now, the the next one talks about forty five G. Can we go to forty five G?
Are you winding up now? Uh?
Yes, this is the last question, Mister Speaker, and I really appreciate the patience of the parliament.
Mister Speaker, we are referring to the anti-dynasty there, so there may have been a mistake in the.
So you're actually referring to forty G?
Yes, Mister.
Mister Speaker.
And uh training.
Yes, so you you're referring to forty three and forty G instead of forty five G.
Correct.
So that is all my question, Mister Speaker, and I thank the the hard work of the uh committee on uh local government and the patience of the parliament. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Uh if you have any proposed amendments, you are free to submit them to uh the secretariat.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh next in line to interpolate is member of the parliament Ramon Pyang over Zoom.
The gentleman from uh North Uppi, Magindano Del Norte is recognized.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair and to our speaker. Uh this manifestation, we just like to manifest uh on sections four one six Sangguniang barangay composition for eight seven Sangguniang Bayan. Section five oh seven Sangguniang Paso de Section Vigan. Uh this manifestation would just uh this representation would ju- would just like to manifest, Madam Chair, that uh very recent very recently, the Ministry of the M I L G and the MIPA has uh come out with joint memorandum circular on this uh representation of I P M R in this respective uh bodies. And uh this manifestation would like to manifest that we uh the selection or the representation of I P M Rs in these bodies should be consistent with the guidelines that has been uh jointly signed by M I L G and MIPA on the uh selection of I P M Rs. And this representation would be would like to say uh eventually when we come to the period of uh amendments, we would like to introduce we deserve the right to introduce amendments to these provisions, Madam Chair.
We we will welcome the proposal for consideration, Mister Speaker. Uh specifically also to have a more consistent uh uh guideline on uh sectoral represent- representatives, particularly for indigenous peoples, Mister Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, uh Mister.
Is that is that all, uh M P Pyang?
Yes, Madam uh Mister Speaker, that's all that I wanted to manifest.
Thank you. Uh submit your proposed amendments. Uh the deadline is uh until Novem- uh October uh oh September twenty four, twenty twenty three.
Mister Speaker, uh I move that we recognize member of the parliament, Attorney Obayu Dapakasim.
The gentleman from Barreira, Magindano del S- Del Sur is recognized. Magindano Del Norte.
Uh thank you, Mister Speaker. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Salam alaykum wr wb. Barakato. Uh Mister Speaker, I just would like to be clarified on certain provisions of the nineteen eighty seven constitution and so far as our mandate of the enactment of this code is concerned, Mister Speaker. If I may be allowed to flash the provision of the constitution, particularly article ten on local government, section, next slide please. Section three, Mister Speaker, of how this provision uh is interpreted by the good chair uh saying that the Congress shall enact a local government code which shall provide for a more responsive and accountable local government structure instituted through a system of decentralization Local government structure instituted through a system of decentralization. With effective mechanisms of recall, initiative, referendum. Allocate among the different local government units, their powers, responsibilities. And resources and provide for the qualifications, election, appointment and removal. Terms, salaries, powers and functions, duties of local officials and all other. Matters relating to the organization and operation of the local go- local units. Mister Speaker, I just would like to be clarified. Ah or ah enlighten on how the good chair ah interprets this provision. On the enactment of the local government code providing for the qualification among others of ah certain posi- ah local positions, ah Mister Speaker.
Um Mister Speaker, while section three, as um as. That is flash now in article ten ah provides for the. Ah duty of Congress to enact a local government code. There is also, this should also be read. With other provisions pertaining to the creation or the. Ah creation of autonomous regions, including the one that we now have. Ah which allows um under also the B O L. To be ah governed by its own local government code, Mister Speaker.
Ah. Section please, ah Mister Speaker, ah am I correct in saying that that provision is actually being referred to in section fifteen regarding the. Creation of autonomous region in Muslim Mindanao, ah Mister Speaker?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Ah Mister Speaker, the ah section eighteen provides that the Congress shall enact an organic. Ah for each autonomous region ah to, is this the same provision that the ah. The chair ah emphasized, ah Mister Speaker, on the creation of the autonomous region?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Next slide please. Mister Speaker, ah. Is the chair ah aware of ah R A seventy one sixty, particularly section five two six? Saying that this code shall apply to all provinces, cities, municipalities and barangays. In the autonomous region until such time as the regional government concern shall have enacted its own local government code.
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, how is the interpretation of the good chair on section fifty six, ah Mister Chair, especially that. At a certain time, ah the local government, R A seventy one sixty applies, ah Mister Speaker?
Section five two six, you mean?
Ah yes, Mister Speaker.
Um considering that provision, um the autonomous region at that time. Ah it was still the A R M M, ah was empowered to have its own local government code, Mister Speaker. And this is, I guess, the legal mandate for the enactment of M. M M A A twenty five, Mister Speaker.
Ah by virtue of five two six, Mister Speaker. When we pass this local government code, what will be the applicability of R A seventy one sixty, ah Mister Speaker?
I think primarily the local government units ah and local governance in general will be. In the B A M will be um governed by our own local governance code. The and R A seventy one sixty can be applied suppletorily if and when there are. Ah situations that are not covered by um the law that we will pass, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, may I know what authority gives us to enact this ah local government code?
Mister Speaker, I guess ah R A seventy one sixty is one. The Bangsa Moro Organic Law is another. Um piece of legislation that ah mandates the enactment of a. Bangsa Moro Local Governance Code, Mister Speaker.
Ah applying this legal basis, Mister Speaker. In the enactment of the local government code and exercising the powers granted to us under the nineteen constitution. Are we also allowed to determine among others the qualification, ah can we go back to section four please? The qualification, salaries, ah. The section three of ah the constitution, particularly article or section three, article ten. Ah are we also allowed in the exercise of our power to enact legislative ah a local government code? To provide among others ah for the qualification and. The terms ah of local officials, ah Mister Speaker, as also cited in the same ah constitutional provision.
Um generally, yes, Mister Speaker, but there are certain limitations as well, ah such as. The elections which may be provided ah. Under different laws and as to be administered. By a constitutional body such as the commission on elections, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, my next question pertains to the. S- ah section on the sharing of the taxes or the national taxes collected within. The region ah wherein the L G Us will have ah to have share as ah. As may be determined by ah by this code, Mister Speaker. Ah with that, Mister Speaker, ah. Is the proponent aware of the sharing of the national government and the local government unit? Ah of the national taxes collected by the, by the go- ah Philippine government, ah Mister ah Speaker?
Yes, Mister Speaker, it's in book two where we provide for the sharing scheme. Ah between the Bangsa Moro government and the local government. And also among the, or between and among the different local government units, Mister Speaker.
Can we go to section two eight four, next slide? Ah Mister Speaker, is the chair aware of the. Allowment of the internal revenue taxes as provided in section two eight four of the. Ah R A seventy one sixty wherein the share of the local government unit. In the national internal revenue taxes ah based on the collection of the third fiscal year preceding the current fiscal year. Ah is forty percent ah Mister ah Speaker and not fifty percent?
Yes, Mister Speaker. And considering the latest jurisprudence. Ah the base for the that is supposed to be shared ah has been expanded, Mister Speaker.
Ah Mister Speaker, um ah can I be clarified of the idea of the chair? Ah on the concept of the situs of taxation, ah Mister Chair, I mean Mister Speaker?
Mister Speaker, ah can I, can the good. The interpolator ah repeat the question, Mister Speaker?
Ah Mister Speaker, I just would like to ah have an understanding of the chair on the concept of the situs of taxation, ah Mister Speaker.
In relation to this, Mister Speaker, or in general? So the idea is ah where the taxable element. Ah is found, ah that is where the responsibility or the power. Of ah taxation lies, Mister Speaker.
Ah with that, Mister Speaker, ah will the chair agree with me that ah the concept of taxation. Generally favors the source of the, of the tax, Mister Speaker?
Yes, Mister Speaker, that's ah one principle.
Ah will she agree also, Mister Speaker, that in some cases or instances, regardless of the sore. Ah fairness or equality is better. Ah achieved when everything is shared equally, ah Mister Speaker?
That is also one principle, Mister Speaker.
Ah with that, Mister Speaker, because I have proposed amendments on the provision ah. On the sharing of the taxes or the national income taxes collected in the Bangsa Moro. To which the local government units will have ah share, Mister Speaker. So. I will be proposing amendments on, I think on book two, on these two provisions, ah Mister's ah. Mister Speaker. That will be all, Mister Speaker. I would like to commend the chair. Ah and all other floor leaders for the patience and the diligence they have committed on this ah. On this endeavor, Mister Speaker. Marami salamat.
Floor leader.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Next in the order of interpolators is M P Kaddil Sinolinding Junior over Zoom.
The gentleman from special geographic areas recognized. I will count one to five. One. Two. Three.
Salamualaikum. Mister Speaker, can you hear me?
Yeah, you are recognized. You may proceed. You have one hour.
Thank you very much, Mister Speaker, for that generous offer. But I would just like to emphasize two things. About the, specifically on the health and nutrition aspect of our bill. And I would like to ah manifest my interest in terms of the nutrition aspect. Of our bill wherein it is already given fact. That our region has the highest number of malnutrition. And this is supported by data coming from the national government. From the international organizations that conducted the survey and it has been ah accepted. By the regional offices as well as our very own Bangsa Moro government since two thousand fifteen. Now, Mister Speaker, since we all know that the problem of nutrition has emanated. From the first one thousand days of the child, starting from, from pregnancy of the mother. To postpartum and the early childhood, then I think we really have to emphasize. The importance of nutrition aspect in the management as well as in the administration. Of our services to be given to the people. Ah Mr. Speaker. This is a manifestation that would like to emphasize that under the provision in the general provisions. That we should have a very specific mu- ah municipal. Provincial and city nutrition action officers. And this ah permanent position, not just a designation. Shall be supported by our barangay health workers as well as the barangay nutrition scholars. We all know that these two group of individuals have a interchanging role. In the ah, in the implementation of health and nutrition programs. And with this, Mister Speaker, isasama ko po yan sa, with your permission. Sa amendments po na isasubmit namin, actually nasubbit na po siya kahapon. And it has been received kanina yata or kahapon din, ah if not, if I'm not mistaken. Ah by the office of our speaker and capifornis po 'yung ating committee chair. Kaya Honorable M P Raisa Jadury. Second ah point dito, Mister Speaker, is about sa role ng devolution sa ating hospitals. Um my apologies po dahil hindi ako nakatendon during the deliberation. But gusto ko rin pong isali doon sa ating amendments on the. Vertical role ng national government and the program implementation ng ating. Ng ating local government units kasi alam po natin, there are nationally funded hospitals. That is operating in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region. To mention, mayroon po tayong apat na't unless may nadagdag po. Da may Pacpac, the Cotabato Regional Medical Center, Sulo Sanitarium, at saka Cotabato Sanitarium. Kung ano po ang magiging inter- interaction or ang relationship po. Between our nationally funded hospitals and the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region. Pangalwa po dito, ah Mister Speaker, is our human resource for health. Alam po rin natin na malaki ang pangangailangan ng ating region in terms of manpower requirement. Hindi po natin kaya na forever nalang tayo maghahire ng job order or contract health services. But I think we really have to emphasize the role and importance ng ating permanent health workers. Ka- ah ranging from the municipal health officers, that is the physicians. The ah public health nurses, those nurses na nagga govern ng public health service. At saka 'yung ating mga registered rural midwives na sila po 'yung nag-iimplement sa barangay levels. Not to mention, the support na ibibigay din ng ating barangay. Health workers as well as the barangay nutrition scholars. So yun lang po, Mister Speaker, ang gusto kong iparating dito sa ating mga kasamahan at sa. Sa ating ah Bangsa Moro Parliament na very important po, very crucial role. Pagdating po sa pagpapatupad ng ating mga services for ah. Health programs, kasama po 'yung nutrition, and of course, pati na rin po 'yung ating sanitation program. Plus 'yung access ng tao sa potable water, which is the main cause po kung bakit napakarami. Ang ah nagkakasakit at naadmit ng mga pasyente, lalong-lalo na ang kabataan. Because of waterborne disease. And with that, Mister Speaker, ah sana po ay ah. 'Yung ating mga amendments ay pakikinggan para po sa kagandahan na rin po ng batas na ito dahil alam ko. It is going to be ah, they ah, kumbaga pagbabasihan din ang iba. Because ah we are trying to make a, a ah. Updated version of the local government code. And lastly, Mister Speaker, in compliance. Tula today look, the ah universal health care implementation. Sana po 'yung ating batas shall be compliant to the universal health care. Para po mas lalo tayo maka acquire ng benefits. As offered by the Philippine Health Insurance Corporation and other entities. Na tumutulong po sa ating kalusugan at sa ating nutrition. Maraming salamat po, Mister Speaker. We shall be sending our amendments at proposed amendments. For a subject for approval po ng committee as well as of course ng ating mga kasamahan din po. Ah maraming salamat. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi taala wa barakatuh.
Wa alaikum salam, duly noted. Floor leader.
I move to recognize M P Jet Lim, Mister Speaker.
The gentleman from Tawi Tawi is recognized.
Ah Bismillah, ah Mister Speaker, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Salamualaikum to everyone. Salamualaikum to our colleagues ah. Physically present as well as those joining us on Zoom. Ah at the outset, I would like to extend my first ah. Invitation to come ah, to everyone to come to Tawi Tawi because we are celebrating our. Fiftieth Camardican. And second, I'd like to extend my congratulations as well to the members of the committee. Ah for this ah napakahabang code, eh. Exactly, this is code napakahaba. Ah congratulations po for all the time and effort na. You put into ah this piece of ah ah legislature, le- legislature. But ah be that as it may, meron lang po akong konting katanungan, although this has been a. Maybe tackled at one point ah or the other ah ng mga kasama natin. Ah may konting tanong lang po ako. First po, dun sa section ah forty?
Secretariat slash section forty?
Y- 'yung tanong ko po is actually related din dun sa, in the ah dun sa questions ni. Ah Attorney Paykasim at saka kay Attorney Don earlier ah raised po ano. Mister Speaker?
Yeah, you may proceed.
Ah. May I know from the proponent, what is exactly our, the the constitutional basis for. Ah providing this ah disqualification provision on the Bangsa Moro, proposed Bangsa Moro Local Governance Code?
Mister Speaker, um this specific provision, as I mentioned in the. First ah day of interpolation is also anchored on section twenty six. Article two of the Philippine Constitution. Which says that subject to reasonable conditions prescribed by law. The state adopts and implements a policy of full pub. Sorry. Sorry, Mister Speaker. Um. Section. Section twenty six, Article two, the state shall guarantee equal access to opportunities for public service and prohibit political dynasties as may be defined by law, Mister Speaker.
Okay, uh uh thank you, uh Mister Speaker. Section twenty six on the declaration of state policies. Uh Mister Speaker, ang interpretation po ba natin ng state dito, does the state refer to the Philippine state represented by the three branches of government, uh the executive, judicial, and legislative? Or does this include also, are we also, does this also refer to the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region in Muslimino? Are we the state uh referred to in this declaration of state policies in the constitution?
Yes, Mister Speaker. I think uh our position is that we are also covered by that uh provision and that the Bayam can be considered part of the state, Mister Speaker.
Oh but uh my question is, are we the state referred to in the uh declaration of uh state policies, ma- uh Mister Speaker? Without me, I know if there are uh jurisprudence or any other legal basis uh that says that uh outside the three branches of the government or outside the legis- uh for more specifically the legislature uh the agents of states or the instrumentalities of states are considered also as the state referred to in the constitution?
Well, one example, Mister Speaker, that uh can support our our position is the uh matter on the exploration, development, and utilization of natural resources, uh which generally would pertain to the state. And yet, in our Bangsa-Moro organic law, um we are given powers pertaining to this and we have shares even in uh what is usually termed as even strategic minerals, no? The fossil fuels, um petroleum, uranium, and natural gas, Mister Speaker. The other one. Okay, earlier, Mister Speaker, uh M P Kapasem also uh asked the Secretariat to flash on the screen the uh matter of uh laws on, of the law on uh local government. And um as mentioned earlier, there, that should be considered uh in relation to the other constitutional provision on autonomous region. And in fact, when Congress enacted its own uh the National Local Government Code, there is a provision stating that um the autonomous region also has the same power of uh enacting its own governance uh local government code, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. So uh the the the, you know, uh Ma- Ma- Raisa mentioned of a uh the reference of a state uh in the organic law. Now, I proceed to the organic law. Is there a specific provision in the organic law where we are mandated to provide the qualifications or disqualifications for a public office similar to that one given to us uh by the Bangsa-Moro Organic Law referring this time to the elections to the members of parliament?
Uh Mister Speaker, under the one, the provisions that were discussed earlier uh with M P, by M P Kapakasam regarding um the law, the enactment of a local government code in the national level, uh which enumerates, no, the specific provisions that are, that were expected to be included in that law. Uh would pertain also, would be covered also by the local government code or local governance code in our case um at this point, uh to cover the same matters, Mister Speaker. So RA seventy one sixty, as we mentioned, says that until such time that the autonomous region is able to is uh unable to enact its own local government code that uh national law will apply. Uh so with the implication that the autonomous region has that power to enact its own law, um and also covering the same uh subject matters of the national local government code.
Uh thank you, Mister Speaker. I have no quarrel, you know, with that, that we have the uh as an autonomous region, uh we have the power to enact laws, but uh laws that that we enact have a certain parameters, two of which that I can mention is the constitutional parameter. And uh the second one is the set of My, my question ag- again, ma'am, uh is there a specific uh provision in the Bangsa-Moro Organic Law granting us the power to provide for the qualification or disqualifications for elective offices in the autonomous region other than those uh provided for uh elections to the members of, elections to the parliament?
Well, gener- uh for a specific, uh specifically on that matter, uh Mister Speaker, there is no clear provision, but if you even go back to uh the organic laws of uh the A R M M, um it would cover elections, okay? Uh and it excluding national election with the implication that uh local elections can actually be a subject matter of laws of a law to be, that would be, that could have been passed by the autonomous region, Mister Speaker.
Uh, re- you, uh Mister Speaker, the good minister mentioned about the the local gov- code, meaning the national lo- local government code, not Republic Act seventy one sixty. Is there also provision in the Republic Act seventy one sixty uh on, similar to the one proposed uh by the bank, by the uh proponent?
Uh, none, Mister Speaker.
Is there a?
I G?
Yeah.
Uh, there is none.
The on the, 'yung relations by consanguinity or affinity, the anti-dynasty provision?
Wala po, Mister Speaker. So this is uh this is new, uh in the sense that uh aside from the barangay, uh sorry, the sangguniang kabataan law, uh this would cover um the disqualification of those who are closely related as intended by the framers of the constitution, Mister Speaker.
So, e- even, Mister Speaker, even in the local government code, uh there is also no disqualifications provided uh based on uh relations by consanguinity or uh affinity on a second degree. Am I correct?
Uh, yes, there is none. I'm not exactly sure what the question was, but uh our position, Mister Speaker, is that we are given that power uh to enact uh the local governance code and that would cover also the qualifications of uh local officials, uh among others, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. As a matter of wha- uh as a matter of fact, we can only find the anti uh dynasty provision in Republic Act seven four two. Am I right, uh Mister Spe- uh Mister Speaker?
Is that the Sangguniang Kabataan law, Mister?
Ah yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Uh, the S K Reform Act of twenty fifteen?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
And uh for the record, uh alam ko, nag, I mean, 'yan malapit na sa tatamo. I'll just read it uh quickly, no? Section ten, an official of S K, either elective or appointive, must be a citizen of the Philippines, eighteen years but not more than twenty-four years of age, able to read and write, et cetera, et cetera. Must not be related within the second civil degree of consanguinity or affinity to any elec- incumbent elected national official or any incumbent elected regional. So this is actually the first anti-dynasty, no? Uh law in the country. Am I, is this correct, Mister?
Yes, Mister.
But uh Mister Speaker, will the proponent agree with me that in the S K law, it refers only to particularly the S K and uh it does not uh cover any other positions uh not mentioned in the law? Tama ho ba?
Yes, Mister Speaker, because it's a law on Sangguniang Kabataan, Mister.
And yes, is there a reference uh in said law that uh other positions that these provisions may be appl- applied to other positions in barangay or in the, any other elective positions?
Uh, it's not within the, that law, Mister Speaker. There's nothing in that law covering other positions, Mister Speaker.
So fa- finally, on this matter, Mister Speaker, uh at least we are clear that there is no uh press, constitutional or legal provision in the organic law that we are uh mandated or we are given the power to uh define the qualifications uh for or, or given the power to uh enact this anti-dynasty provision, Mister Speaker?
Mister Speaker, as we mentioned earlier, we can uh, we should read all the provisions together and uh considering, for example, RA seventy one sixty saying that the autonomous region will be covered by the said law uh on matters pertaining to uh election, qualifications, disqualifications. Um and, and as mentioned, the autonomous region can also have its own law uh on local government. Uh, the conclusion is that that local government code will cover the same matters that are provided in the national local government code. Otherwise, Mister Speaker, there would be a vacuum where uh you would have a uh regional or a Bangsa-Moro local government code that may only cover uh a very small or you know, not all the matters pertaining to local governments, Mister Speaker. And then they would not be covered by national law, Mister Speaker.
Uh, regarding the vacuum, Mister Speaker, feared by the good minister, hindi ho ba kanina sinabi the the local government code applies? So uh there's really no fear of a vacuum kung yun lang ho 'yung uh uh yung concern po?
If we don't enact, Mister Speaker. But if we exercise the uh power to enact on all the matters uh mentioned, there uh there would not be a vacuum, Mister Speaker.
Okay, uh on that matter, may I uh uh invite the attention of the body to section seventeen of the Article ten of the Constitution? Uh I think this was also cited before by Attorney Pakasens- Bakasem. And I read, all powers fa- functions and responsibilities not granted by this con- constitution or by law to the o- autonomous regions shall be vested in the national government. So this is not actually a question, but uh just a uh something that the the proponent may or the committee can look upon uh moving forward uh as a guideline.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh and we read it to uh mean that if it's uh granted by the constitution or by law, then uh the powers are vested with the autonomous region. And uh Republic Act eleven zero five four uh actually provides for uh the power uh to the Bangsa-Moro uh autonomous region to enact a local government code, Mister Speaker.
And uh Mister Speaker, by way of rejoinder lang, no? Since uh it is also my position that uh there's none in the constitution or in the national laws or in the, in the organic law on that matter, then this should be left uh best left, you know, to the le- uh the legislative power of the Congress, 'yung regarding po sa anti-dynasty provision. Uh but uh thank you, Mister Speaker. But moving forward, uh may I request the secretariat to move to section forty three? Okay, uh by the way, I, I'd like to again commend, you know, the committee and as well as the proponent of this local government for this uh very novel, maganda ang uh 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 provision on uh, I'm also an advocate that uh all executive officers, all executive officials must uh from time to time be updated with national laws, be equipped, you know, with capacities for training, planning, et cetera, et cetera. Because uh uh mahirap po magpatakbo ng uh L G O if uh those drivers, the drivers that uh are steering the wheel for the L G Os are not well equipped with knowledge and uh enough experience po, no? Uh but uh again, uh um my question is when does uh, when, when do we consider a person already a public person and therefore within the ambit of the uh within the ambit of, of the administrative power of the M I L G or? Thank you, Mister Speaker.
I'm not sure if I understood the question correctly, Mister Speaker, but uh when a person who wins an election assumes office, then uh he becomes that local elected official, Mister Speaker.
So when he uh is elected and assume office, but before he assumes office and that an assumption of office hap- happens on the noon of June thirty, he is not yet a public officer, am I right? Unless he's an incumbent. Is that correct, Mister Speaker?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
And if, if he's not yet an o- a public officer and has not yet assumed of office, uh meron ba tayong, do we have uh this uh authority over uh these people who are still private persons to direct them to do something and to require them other than those already required by the national law as a prerequisite for assumption of office?
Um, Mister Speaker, I'm not sure again if I get the question correctly because this section, uh particularly under paragraph, the second paragraph says that the requirement for mandatory training uh would be, would start during the incumbency of the elected official, Mister Speaker.
Uh, did you post a section forty three, Mister Speaker? It says all newly elected official shall, before he, he or she can assume office, therefore it happens before June thirty twenty twenty-three. Tama ho 'yung bagka kaintindiko or baka ako lang po 'yung uh mali naman po?
Uh, yes, Mister Speaker, this was already pointed out uh earlier uh in a separate interpolation, Mister Speaker. Our idea, and we will uh reflect that in the uh final version, Mister Speaker, for approval of the body, is that the elected official will have to assume office and during the incumbency uh will undergo uh mandatory training, uh Mister Speaker.
In that case, uh uh ma- uh Mister Speaker, I withdraw any further question on, on that uh, on this uh particular provision, having heard the uh the manifestation of the good minister. My apologies, you know, because uh nandito ako sa province and uh the we have an intermittent signal. Uh hindi ko ho na susubaybayan portion of the uh uh proceedings of the parliament. Uh yun lang ho and uh again, assalamualaikum to everyone. Wassalam. Thank you, Mister Speaker, and thank you to the uh good minister, Madame Raisa Jajuri.
Thank you. Any proposed amendment you can submit uh until Sunday.
Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, uh I, uh res- I just got um a request from another member of the parliament to interpolate a very short interpolation. Member of the parliament, Sohar Toismael, may we recognize?
The gentleman from Sultan Mastura?
Cudarat.
Sultan Cudarat Magindano del Norte is recognized.
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you very much, uh Mister Speaker. Um, ako po'y may konting katanungan lamang po, Mister Speaker. Uh, dahil uh dito sa batas na puna ito is, nagbigay na po tayo ng ating uh um position paper patungkol specially po sa S K no. So alhamdulillah, part of the provision I approve naman. So uh may konting tanong lang po ako, Mister Speaker, kung mamarapatin ang ating uh chairman of the this committee, Mister Chair.
Yes, mamarapatin ko po, Mister Speaker.
Uh, Mister Speaker, nakasad po kasi sa section five eighty four, paragraph C, the committee shall supervise the transfer of such powers and functions mandated under this code to the local government units together with the corresponding properties, assets and liabilities of the offices of the agencies, agencies and et cetera. Uh, Mister Speaker, ang tanong ko lamang po ay, ang intention po ba ng provision na to, Mister Speaker, ay lahat ng properties and assets of the region na nasa loob ng isang L G O, Mister Speaker, ay automatically na kasama po sa ma- may bibigay o mailalagay sa pangangasiwa ng ng local government, Mister Speaker? Kung saan po ito ay nakalagay?
Well, Mister Speaker, under paragraph C, uh, ano ang section? It's section five eight four.
Yes po.
Uh the there would be a devolution committee that will be created uh and aside from as making an assessment as to the capacity of the L G U's, uh it's also mandated to um supervise the transfer of the powers and functions and as mentioned, including properties and uh assets, Mister Speaker. But as discussed in the committee, Mister Speaker, there is, there may still be certain uh powers that will be retained by the regional government, Mister Speaker. And that is the matter that uh I think the devolution committee should uh take note of uh considering that there is devolution of certain powers, but in other provisions, Mister Speaker, uh the bill also provides that the regional agencies uh because, Mister Speaker, the powers of the regional agencies are not found in the local government code. It's in another law, it's in the administrative code, but by the Ministry of He- uh Social Services and the other. There is a provision saying that um in fact subregional offices may still be retained uh by the ministries. So the understanding, Mister Speaker, is uh there should be transfer of power, transfer of assets, um but in section five eight five, Mister Speaker, that those assets utilized by the ministry's provincial offices that are necessary for the retained powers and for augmentation may be retained by the bangsa moral government, Mister Speaker. But uh for the municipal offices, they shall be uh transferred to the municipal government, Mister Speaker.
Uh, yes, uh thank you very much, uh Mister Speaker. Actually, that's that is the intention of this um um uh interpolation, Mister Speaker, kasi uh nakita po natin yun na uh those are very important things to consider. And um I think it it should also be part of the uh assessment of the committee, Mister Speaker, na lahat ng mga properties and assets ay hin- uh mapa- ma- mapasama pasama sa uh assessment po ng ating committee. Kasi alam po natin, may mga properties uh and assets po ang ating region na gaya ng na nasabi ng ating uh proponent, ng ating chairman, Mister Mister Chair, Mister Speaker, na kinakailangan pa rin sa uh sa ng ating region- regional office. The likes of uh vehicles maybe, Mister Speaker, vehicles, equipments, and even records, Mister Speaker. So um with in due time, Mister Speaker, I would like to make an amendment on this, Mister Speaker.
Uh, yes, Mister Speaker, I would just like to make one example. Uh, even if for ex- um in the case of or in cases of uh calamities, Mister Speaker, in the devolved functions, it will be L G U's that shall be first responders. Uh, but the Ministry of Social Services and maybe other ministries that have similar functions uh will always be there to augment uh resources uh that may be lacking in the level of the local governments, Mister Speaker. We have seen this in many calamities that uh local government units are not able to fully provide for the necessities of uh displaced communities. And of course, we will need all the equipment still and the other uh assets that would allow the ministry to uh deliver the goods to these uh affected communities, Mister Speaker.
Uh, yes, Mister Speaker. Again, I would like to commend the chairman of the committee and of course, all the members of the committees for this uh uh for the, for having this bill, uh Mister Speaker. Thank you very much, Mister Speaker.
Floor leader.
Uh, thank you, Mister Speaker. The last for the first round of interpolations is MP Deputy Speaker Nabiltan uh via Zoom, Mister Speaker. And then it would be followed by uh MP H J Abdullah and MP Bayinta Nambatuhan.
So the last interpolator according to the list that was submitted to me is uh the lady from Magindano. Uh, the gentleman from Sulu, the deputy speaker Nabiltan is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Uh, thank you very much, floor leader. Uh uh if the committee chair would like, would yield to a few clarificatory questions?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Thank you very much. Ibalikan ko lang ah, na nabanggit na ito 'yung mandaro- mandatory public consultations. Bakit mandatory na consultation lang office ng national government before they implement projects? Programs and projects?
Mister Speaker, uh is the good gentleman referring to?
Implemented by the national government, yes.
What section, Mister Speaker? Twenty seven?
Yeah, yun, yung attached in the bed, don't long it.
Nadilang, Mister Speaker. I'm still looking for the specific provision. It's in section two, okay. Section two C. Yes, Mister Speaker, uh as explained earlier, uh it is man- it is a mandatory step. That means there's a requirement, but as I mentioned earlier, it's for a consultation not for approval, Mister Speaker. So that means that um the mandatory public consultation is a requirement, but there is no requirement for an agreement between the agency that's uh about to implement the program and the uh local government unit concerned, Mister Speaker.
So walang penalty or uh with non-compliance?
I think, Mister Speaker, if we look at another section, uh, anong section? Um, in relation to section two C, there is a wait.
Mag-uusapan pa ba yan o?
Section thirty two? Okay, um so the effect would be uh if you are not able to im- to conduct the consultation according to section thirty two, uh the program will not
Nationally funded.
implemented. Uh, it doesn't say, Mister Speaker, so it may cover both uh national or regional, Mister Speaker.
Pero kanina, nasa provision, uh nationally funded projects. So if this anggunean will not allow, it will not be implemented? Or does it, this section refer only to local projects, regional projects, not including na- okay. Yu- yun tanong ko, will this not impede or delay the implementation of programs or projects, yung prior consultations? Di ba red date na naman to na iniwasan ng gobyerno?
Well, the idea, Mister Speaker, is to make sure that even if we could implement programs and projects in our areas, that there would be the least um resistance. Adverse effect on uh on the population, on uh ecological balance or uh on the matters mentioned, I think in section thirty one, Mister Speaker.
So you are proceeding from the assumptions that uh not all projects can be good or may be harmful to the community? Not all project can be good.
Well, Mister Speaker, there may be unintended effects, Mister Speaker, and is why there's a need for consultation. But as I mentioned earlier, Mister Speaker, to in order to balance the these matters on the adverse effects, as well as on the other hand, the um development of the region that we want to achieve, uh we are willing to listen to proposals, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Madam uh Madam Chair. Uh, thank you very much for that uh. Next, may I be clarified? I I don't think, I I don't know if I missed this on educational qualification for the local officials, yung requirement ng educational, deleted na ba to?
Deleted na, Mister Speaker. And uh as an alternative, what we have uh what we have proposed, Mister Speaker, is the mandatory uh training and capability building so that we do not require uh the formal educational attainment as a qualification for candidates. But once they are elected uh and they become public officials, we expect that there will be interventions that would allow them to harness their skills and make them more effective and efficient as uh local officials, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Madam. Uh, it's good that it's deleted because I have very strong reservation on that. It uh it violates, uh to me, it violates the equal protection clause as a citizen. Uh, section forty three, ito na 'yung mandatory training, ito na pinalit, training capacity development? Yan na pinalit, but it will only be effective once they assume office, no? Not before, not before. So this will change?
Yes, Mister Speaker, we will uh clarify language that would show that the requirement i- happens or will commence uh when they are already public officials, Mister Speaker.
Thanks uh for that explanation. May I now go to the hot topic on uh on uh disqualification, on uh, what's that? Paragraph G? Paragraph G?
Um forty five G, yes.
Uh, Madam Chair, Mister Speaker, in the deliberation of uh the B O L in the Senate, Senator Delon wanted to put an anti dynasty provision in the B O L. However, I I was asked if uh as me- as OPAP under secretary, I was who was uh always present in that deliberation. I was asked if if this will be good. I I told the good senator that uh I I think it's a good idea, but not but not placed in the B O L, not in the bangsa moral organic law. If they want a a anti dynasty provision, they should pass a national law applicable to the whole Philippines. So and 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 according to Singh Abbas, it goes against our culture. Muslim culture in the Philippines are clannish. Besides, uh Madam Chair, uh what do you think, uh why do you think the framers of the Constitution eighty seven did not place, did not agree on placing a provision which will make it immediately executive? Would you have any idea on this? Why was the anti dynasty provision not included in the constitution?
Well, um I will not venture to uh guess, Mister Speaker. I was not able to read through the the journal of the Constitutional Commission, but I guess the important thing is that there is that mandate under uh article two uh for an anti dynasty uh arrangement in the country, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, uh Madam Chair. Uh, thank you for the explanation. Uh, Madam Chair, uh are we, are we allowed or is it within our power to ins- to put in the anti dynasty provision? Doesn't it, the powers pertain to Congress of the Philippines, to define what is anti dynasty?
Well, as mentioned earlier, Mister Speaker, our position is that uh when the constitution says that the state shall ensure uh equal opportunities and uh provide for anti dynasty uh arrangements, uh it covers also the bangsa moral autonomous region as being part of the state, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mister Speaker. Thank you for that explanation. On that, I still have my strong reservation that we are included as part of the state. To me, it only refers to the national government, National Congress of the Philippines. Mister Speaker, uh Madam Chair, yung anti dynasty refers to the early practice of the kings, no? Mga monarchs, di ba? Na they control everything, all resources within their power, and they can dictate on anything. That's why nagiging dynasty, kasi ruling class lang. Pero sa atin, hindi naman tayo ganun, democratic tayo. So would you thi- don't you think uh that the right of the electorate is violated by putting in this uh disqualification considering that it will diminish the the choices of the electorates in the election that they are going to participate? Is that not a diminution of the power of the electorate to choose?
Well, as mentioned uh by the good gentleman, Mister Speaker, the constitution itself uh provides for um democratizing actually the choices outside of one specific or a few families uh who have, who may have the political uh clout in one area, Mister Speaker, and allow others outside of the family to participate and offer themselves as an option, as a choice for the voters, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mister Speaker, but you are talking of an election where you are given the choice not to vote for those families or or people who are the ruling clans. Uh, is that not correct? In an election, you are free to choose?
Yes, Mister Speaker. And as I said, uh Mister Speaker, if we democratize the options, uh then the choices would not be limited to just one clan or one family and allow others to, as I said, offer themselves as a uh public uh local elective official, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mad- uh Mister Speaker. I still have a very big reservation on that because to me an election provides everybody uh a choice on who to vote for. Uh, I was just, I was just wondering if we could not just address the ills of the elections like vote buying, terrorism, instead of putting in an anti dynasty provision, which is very restrictive and uh instead of putting in an anti-dynasty provision, which is very restrictive and ah to me ah deprives the electorate of of a why of a good choice, good choice.
Ah well, that's one way of looking at it, Mister Speaker, but ah as we see it ah in the B A R M and in the context of the call for ah you know, moral governance and ensuring that ah we have free choices, ah the wider the choices are, the better. Um and considering the constitutional mandate, Mister Speaker, ah we have included this in the bill, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair, ah Mister Speaker. Ah let me leave that again, ah although ah ah it's a good explanation, but ah I still have my own ah reservation on this issue. On on the health on health, I don't know the provision, maybe 'yung later part provision, ah. Is there a devolus- is there a devolution of 'yung health ah services to the local?
Yes, Mister Speaker. It's in book three, Mister Speaker.
Paano yun ah? I did evolve sa municipality ang R H U?
Ah Mister Speaker, let me just ah read through it or.
Yes, ma'am. Kulang yun na print sa akin eh. Six hundred thirty-one kasi, di ako maabot dun sa printing.
Well, Mister Speaker, um for the municipalities, Mister Speaker, they shall in relation to R H U's, no? Rural Health.
May time table ba yun for devolution?
Yes, Mister Speaker, there will be ah five-year ah gradual devolution and it will be based on an assessment and a timeline as to ah for the L G U's, Mister Speaker.
Marami pong kinakabahan na pag na ano raw yun ah na devolve sa L G U's 'yung mga ano health services. Ah anyway, before you do that, ah meron naman assessment na on their competency.
I think, Mister Speaker, it's under the powers of the municipal governments. There's mention here of ah construction of clinics, health centers, and other health facilities necessary to carry out ah health services to its constituents.
Baraga health station. Ilang-ilang years from the Ilang years, ilang years, ah Mister Speaker.
Five years po, Mister Speaker, 'yung parang ah transition natin o 'yung gradual devolution. That's the max.
Five years from the enactment of this code?
Yes, Mister Speaker. The first year would be dedicated to the work of a technical working group under the Devolution Committee to assess the ah financial and ah technical ah capacities of local government units and then ah thereafter another three months to formulate a devolution plan, Mister Speaker, considering the assessment that has ah by then been already made and ah thereafter the actual devolution, Mister Speaker.
What if the in a particular locality, the assessment proves that they are not yet competent financially and competency? Will the qua- will we just ah run it through and ah push through with the devolution within the five years?
Ah Mister Speaker, well, first, we have to make an assessment so that we know ah which L G U's can actually take on the responsibilities even less for le- ah earlier than five years. Ah those that may not may use the maximum number of years ah to be included in their devolution plan. But if despite that, it cannot um take on ah some of the powers, because we think they will have the capacity, maybe not for all, ah but for some ah for some of these L G U's. Ah in which case, the higher L G U, Mister Speaker, still has the power to provide augmentation. Ah what we do not want is a situation where the powers are al- are already lodged in the L G U an L G U which cannot deliver ah and the constituents suffer from lack of the services. So the higher L G U or even the Bangsa Moro government can augment ah or can provide the ah service or the assistance or the facility, Mister Speaker.
Who will who who will ah be in charge of their salaries? Who will pay their salaries? L G U's or still the Bangsa Moro government?
Ah if there is devolution of specific powers, Mister Speaker, it will now be the local government units in the same manner that all the other L G U's outside of B A R M ah carry the burden of or the responsibility of providing for compensation of their ah local appointive officials, Mister Speaker.
Ano nalang ang ano na, thank you, Madam Chair, Mister Speaker. Ano nalang po ang ah sasagutin ng ating Bangsa Moro Regional Government. Wala na tayang expense sa kanila. What happens if the local, the municipal officials will not pay the salaries of the personnel, health service, health personnel? Where will they go?
Well, first of all, Mister Speaker, the regional government agencies will have may have to reorganize themselves ah and adjust their programming ah considering the devolution, because we do not also want to compete with the local government ah that is already capable of providing the service. Um and on programs that or powers that have already been devolved to the L G U. So my my example, Mister Speaker, ah let me focus on health. Um if we free the Ministry of Health of all these ah programs and services that can already be ah delivered by the local government units, then the ministry at the regional level can actually operate ah facilities like a regional government, ah regional hospital. Um and may put them not only in one area, ah specialized hospitals that can also provide the ah more advanced ah services ah to our constituents, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair, ah Mister Speaker. So hindi naman natin bibitawan to, no?
Ah Mister Speaker, with what, the intention is really to empower L G U's so that they can also be at par with other ah local government units. Ah one observation, for example, Mister Speaker, in some of the award ah giving bodies to local government units, there's a requirement, for example, for the L G U to have its own social welfare officer. And in many cases, the B A R M L G U's do not have them. It is the M S S D that ah has ah social welfare officers ah designated or assigned to the different municipalities. So with this provision on devolution, Mister Speaker, the L G U will now have ah a better chance of showing its ah capacity to deliver its mandate as the ah the lower-level government, no? Ah that is closer to the ah people residing in their area, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mister Speaker. I have no doubt that there are a lot of outstanding L G U's in the B A R M regions. However, there and the opposite, there are also lag ah municipalities or L G U's who cannot deliver it or cannot be at par with it. I hope that we will not ah just feed them these ah services without ah the corresponding ah safety nets. So thank you very much, ah Madam Chair. Ah wala na po ako muna in the meantime, wala na muna akong tanong. Ah yun lang po sa akin ah, I hope that ah we can, we can ah still do some adjustments before we finalize this, if only to attain our un- un- unanimous vote for this piece of legislation. But before I, lest I be remiss, let me congratulate you, Madam Chair, and your committee members for a very, very good job ah for a job well done and ah considering that it consists of a voluminous document, six hundred thirty-one. Naubos 'yung papel ko para iprint lang. Ah anyway, maganda po ang mga panukala sa loob, at ako'y nagagalak kayo po ay ah nakatapos nitong pinakahihintay natin, dahil December pa yata last year ito. So yun lang ang concern ko sa disqualification based on ah ah the relationship, kasi you cannot choose your relatives, only God knows. So thank you very much. Ah wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh.
Lower Leader, can I have a five-minute health break?
Yes, Mister Speaker, of course.
And ah we will recognize later M P Kyle Khalid and then the lady from Maginda, no? Five minutes.
Mister Speaker, may we recognize M P Khalid Haji Abdullah?
The gentleman from Lano Gose was recognized.
Yes, wassalamualaikum, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, ah gusto ko lang maliwanag ang 'yung mga ako at saka 'yung mga nakikinig sa atin with ah section forty, letter I. Yes, yes, Mister Speaker. Ah letter I, those incumbent chief executive officials who seek to be elected to the immediately lower positions, ito 'yung disqualifications. Ah anong example nito? Example, 'yung gobernador, hindi pwede siya mag ah vice-governor. 'Yung governor, pwede siya mag-mayor.
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Okay, another question, Mister Speaker. K- kasi ito nangyayari sa atin ito. Usually, 'yung qualifications to run to an office, you must be a resident at least one year, diba? In a respective area?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Oh, example, 'yung si Mayor A, si ah ngayon, mayor siya, hindi siya pwedeng komandidato ng vice-governor within the same area. What if, bago matapos 'yung three years na yun, nag-register siya dun sa kabilang municipyo? Pwede ba siya mag-run doon ng vice gover- ah vice mayor? Inamit naman na 'yung minimum requirements na residency.
Ah Mister Speaker, there's another provision ah that would cover the situation where an incumbent ah will attempt to run in another ah local government unit, Mister Speaker. So that situation will not be covered by ah paragraph I, but the this the provision will fall under letter H. So it says here, local officials elected in local government units shall not be qualified to run for any office in another local government unit, Mister Speaker. And then it goes on to explain that ah they shall not apply if the local official is running for ah an office in the higher constituent local government unit covering the local government unit in which he was elected in the last election. So mag-example nalang ako. So kung if someone is running for, ah someone is a mayor and ah it says here that you cannot run in another L G U um but this that prohibition will not apply if you run for governor um since of the same of the province which covers the municipality ah where you were once mayor. So it's another L G U, but that is allowed because the higher L G U, ah in this case, the province, nakocoover niya rin po 'yung municipyo kung saan kagaling. Okay, that's one exception. And then or in a lower-level local government unit ah covered by the local government unit in which she wa- he or she was elected in the last preceding election. So example naman po doon ay ah mayor ka, gusto mo pong tumakbo ng barangay doon sa loob ng iyong municipyo, pwede rin po yun. But to go outside of the L G U that is not a higher-level constituent L G U covering the L G U which you once where you were once mayor or covering a lower-level ah L G U ah that is that does not cover that ah L G U where you were once mayor, bawal pu yun.
Ah thank you, Mister Speaker, Madam Chair. At least nalinawan, kasi karamihan sa atin, siyempre, sa- sa- sasabi nila taga logar- siyempre, sa- sa- sasabi nila taga lugar ah, kung saang lugar ng nanay niya or whatever, sabi na taga dyan din ako, kaya pwede akong mag-register. Cheers to vivid. Karamihan naman sa atin circumventing the law. At least malagyan natin ang safeguard 'yung gano'ng issue. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you po ah, MP Abdullah.
The lady from Maguindanao, Del Norte ah Del Sur is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Um I know that um everybody wants to go home. It's already five thirty five. And I promise the speaker to have it short before six o'clock. So in this case, Mr. Speaker, um I'll skip book two and book four. I'll just focus on book three and just a portion of book three. Um, Mr. Speaker, um upon reading the functions of a- a- and by the way, I don't want to sound redundant doon sa mga nag-interpete na so as much as possible, I will not repeat. Pero kung there are cases na ma-repeat, pasensya na po. Um but ay ano, um nung binasa ko 'yung functions ng barangay chair, chairman, chairperson, parang naisip po sarili ko, ayaw kong maging barangay kapitan. Bakit? Parang hindi na siya matutulog. Ang daming naka-load na functions na kung tutusin, no? Kung once we execute this, this would be the ideal na makita natin at maramdaman siguro 'yung sinadhabin nating development sa isang community, no? Ah barangay. But nonetheless, ah Mr. Speaker, um I commend um the committee for, for coming up with such an enumeration. Um, Mr. Speaker, ang unang tanong ko, doon ba sa enumeration natin ng mga functions, no? Um maganda kasi nilamtna natin altogether, no? Um, pag giniba sinunod ng isang barangay L G U, may napaloob ba dito sa local government code na penalties?
Well, first of all, Mr. Speaker, let ah we will clarify that ah while we have enumerated a lot of powers and functions, ah some powers may not be relevant to some ah specific L G U. So they do not have to exercise ah all of these at in at the same time and ah in all cases, Mr. Speaker. But if there are ah powers here that are truly ah that should be exercised and they fail to ah exercise them and they, that may fall under ah disciplinary action, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, ah Mr. Speaker, dahil um marami dyan ginamit na shall, no? So that means to say it's mandatory. Ah but there instances also that ah the function is more of assisting, no? So okay lang yun, no? Ah but with regards to the functions that are mandatory, um meron tayong sanctions.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
And we can find that
The disciplinary action, Mr. Speaker? It's chapter nine of book three then, no? Ah sorry, book one.
Book one. Na- namuna sa book one, bakit nauna 'yung penalties sa enumeration ng functions?
Because ah we figured that this would be general provisions regarding ah well, disciplinary action, ah Mr. Speaker, that would cover the different ah local officials. And there's a, there are provisions pertaining to the procedure of ah filing administrative complaints and so forth, Mr. Speaker.
So um may nakalagay kasi dyan na parang some sort of talagang enumeration. We, we tried really to enumerate, pero sa dulo niya, hindi natin ilagay na perform such other functions as may be directed by higher authorities.
Ah like a catch-all provision?
Yes. Um, hindi kaya tayo ma-technical kasi nag-enumerate tayo. And if there are um ah functions later on that may evolve, pwede nilang iclaim na hindi an part ng aming mandato.
Well, we can ah amend that, Mr. Speaker, to ensure that other functions that may not have been included ah and may have be, may be provided even in future legislation ah can, would still be a function of the barangay or the other L G Us. Ah le- let me just clarify, Mr. Speaker, that some of the items found in the enumeration are also found in the draft ah or the, or R A seven one sixty or M M A eight twenty five. We have, some were moved from one place to another, specifically in book three. Ah we also made consultations with the different ministries ah to ask what powers they think are ah are already being exercised ah by the different ah levels of local government.
Exactly, that's what I noticed, Mr. Speaker, and I was about to ask that. Um because the way I look at it, um tinanong natin 'yung ministries, ano ba 'yung mga ginagawan niyo na sa L G Us? Am I right in that assumption?
Ah yes, there was a consultation with ministries.
And in like manner, have we asked, for example, a random consultation with the barangay official, a city mayor, a munisipal mayor, or a provincial governor as to how they feel about the enumeration of powers and functions that we want them to do.
I think, Mr. Speaker, well, first, there were public consultations and there were public officials, ah local officials who were ah invited in all the ah consultations we conducted in, I think, six or eight ah venues, no? Ah in different provinces and cities. And at the same time, in the drafting of the bill, ah in the level of the cabinet through the M I L G, there were consultations also made by ah to, to cover the um comments and ah yeah, the comments of the different local officials in the different levels of local governments.
So in other words, they have already, as a matter of principle, so seemingly, kung ano 'yung laman nung, nung ah kanilang gagawain, 'yung kanilang magiging functions, and they are amenable to it.
Ah most of these, Mr. Speaker, are, as I mentioned, it's in seven one sixty or ah other national laws. We've incorporated ah certain functions that are provided in national laws. Ah and therefore, I don't think it's a, it's a deviation from what is actually being ah exercised by ah L G Us outside of the bar, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um and um, Mr. Speaker, um there are some provisions um on the functions that um intend to collect, collect data from the individuals, families. And um as a general principle, are the collection of data governed by data privacy act?
Ah yes, Mr. Speaker, that should be ah read into the log, but we can make that explicit, Mr. Speaker. Some of the data may not ah necessarily um include the personal ah information of the respondents, but a collation of ah information or data that would help the higher L G U or the Bangsa Moro government in the designing of its ah different programs, relevant programs, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, in due time, Mr. Speaker, we'll propose for amendments to capture that. Um next, Mr. Speaker, is ah on allowing barangay chair, chairpersons, chairman to carry guns, Mr. Speaker. Ah at the outset, um I would like to manifest my ah ah my ah objection to this particular um provision. Ah because contra- this is contrary to our peacebuilding and peace-promoting ah initiatives, Mr. Speaker. Ah it's a manifestation, Mr. Speaker. Ah next, Mr. Speaker, is ah on subsidizing the honorarium. Um I did some little computations based on the original um functions then. Ah I'm glad that you re- removed some of the ah um provisions that talks about honorarium and ah salaries of local officials. Because ah based on my computations, um we bridge ah on a maximum billions, no? Billions 'yung lumabas na figures. But would you have some idea, because there are still retained provisions with regards to the honorarium of not less than five thousand um for the barangay, no? Barangay chairperson, and there are other officials. Um is the Ministry of Finance aware and how much did, did it cost to the, will it cost to the Bangsa Moro government once we implement ah this code?
One minute suspension. Let's continue the interpolation.
Um there was a outstanding question, ah Mr. ah Speaker.
Yes, there was a outstanding question. No answer yet.
Computation is ah maximum of one hundred fifty-five million ah per year, Mr. Speaker. That's ah five thousand pesos times two thousand five hundred ninety ah punong barangays in the whole region ah times twelve months, Mr. Speaker. So this is just, this is already the maximum because as we said, the augmentation ah may not happen for all if they are if the barangay is capable of providing for ah honorarium or the S G level compensation, Mr. Speaker.
And Mr. Speaker, um these five thousand will commence when?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, it will start ah when the law is passed and the implementing rules and regulations are adopted, Mr. Speaker.
So upon the adoption of the I R R. But, Mr. Speaker, my question is, when are we going to devolve the functions to the L G Us?
Ah, Mr. Speaker, as mentioned earlier, ah this is a five-year period. The first, I think the first three months would be for I R R, ah drafting and adoption. Ah there will be, I think, six months for assessment of the technical and financial capacity of the different L G Us. And then for three months, the Devolution Committee should be ah working on the, or should have already worked on the Devolution Plan, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and um my, my um next question, Mr. Speaker, is that um with regards to, I, I leave that portion muna. Um with regards to the specific provision na, I saw some function that the barangay has the power to declare a state of calamity. Um, is that power already being enjoyed by the current barangay chairpersons?
I think, Mr. Speaker, this comes from R A one O one to one. And a, another basis would be the uh memorandum circular from D I L G, Mr. Speaker.
So are we, uh so there's a, already a power granted to the barangay chairpersons. Are we sure about that? One-on-one? Kasi ang naririnig ko, nadideclare 'yung mayor, hindi 'yung barangay chairman. Nagre-recommend 'yung barangay kay mayor para si mayor mag-declare. Hindi si barangay chair.
Let me just check, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker. This says that, um, under section sixteen, um, the declaration may be done by the local uh sangguniyan, Mr. Speaker.
So it's the sangguniyan? Pwede?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. So let's move, uh, Mr. Speaker, to 'yung um, section four six seven in relation to section forty-three with regards to mandatory training. Kasi mukhang may repetition. Um, sinabi na natin sa section forty-three, 'yung mandatory, inulit natin sa section four six seven, mandatory training, and continuing capacity building for S K.
So, uh, I think four six seven uh is specific on the barangay, ay, the sangguniyang kabataan.
So are they, are they not covered by section forty-three?
Um, maybe we can clarify that, that they are not, because there's a separate set of uh training for uh the S K. Uh, and this will be under the B Y C and the M I L G, Mr. Speaker.
And the other training for the other lo- local officials will be done also by B Y C?
By M I L G.
By M I L G?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. And maybe-
May I interrupt uh very briefly? Uh, why are we separating this provision? It would appear that uh we are removing the B S K E from the class of uh elected officials. And uh in such a way, it would question our provision on the anti-dynasty provision if we, if we remove them from that class of officials that are elected. Uh, can we not just insert the B Y C as a-
That's one option, Mr. Speaker, ju- just to include, except that there's a separate section or chapter ba'to on uh S K.
Yeah, but, but maybe when you talk about the mandatory training season na lang.
Yeah, uh because
Yun, 'yun 'yung point ko.
My perspective here is that I do, I don't want to be, uh, 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 it, it would be uh contradictory to remove them from the class of elected officials and then uh use the B S K E as a basis for, uh, as a justification for uh the anti-dynasty provision.
We will work on the language, Mr. Speaker, but take note that the modules uh provided under four six eight uh are different from the one for the other local elective officials, Mr. Speaker.
And we can say that?
In, yes.
In uh ano?
Uh, we can work on whether that would be better, Mr. Speaker, or not. We will check, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Um, I'll, Mr. Speaker, okay na. Um, sigur last three. Um, on section four oh five, um, 'yun sa honorarium uli. May nabanggit tayo diyan sa dulo na D B M? I'm not sure if we, i- if we have the power to say that the D B M should do this.
Which part, Mr.?
Pinakadulo, pinakadulo ng section four oh five. In lieu of the payment of the honorarium, the Ministry of Finance and Budget and Management, or D B M, at the instant, instance of the sangguniyan of the, uh, of the barangay having sufficient funds, shall create a plantilia position for their punong barangay. Are we in the position to say this to D B M?
Uh, can we be directed to the correct portion of uh section four oh six? Saan po yun?
Four oh five, four oh five.
Five, ano, may paragraphs ba?
The dulo, pinakadulo na paragraph ng four oh five.
After the enumeration of, di ba ang four oh five is the powers?
Four oh five A. Four oh five A. A, tapos dulo niya. A, letter A. A. Ba, ayun, yun, 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 yun. Yun, si D B M.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I think that may have been inadvertently left uh without the strike through.
Okay.
So we can delete that part, Mr. Speaker.
Um, and itong ano, 'yung sabi nating kanina na honorarium ng barangay ay limang libo. Wala na bang honorarium 'yung sangguniyang barangay? D B M, merong three thousand, di ba?
Mr. Speaker, before we go to that, uh, can we go to the one uh, that portion, oo, uh, where D B M was mentioned? In lieu. Yeah, ang idadalit po natin 'yung or D B M, no? But we will do that later, uh, when we-
Just, just to plug it kasi parang wala sa pa-
Yes, because uh they were afraid that the whole paragraph was uh taken out. Yes, D B M lang po.
And 'yung ano, itong three thousand, honorarium din ito to be paid by
Which pa- paragraph?
Ah, 'yung sumunod sa kanya, members of Sangguniyan. 'Yung baba niya, na 'yun sa baba. 'Yung three thousand dyan, barangay fans ba yan?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Barangay fans or atin?
Speaker, uh, barangays na po.
So, we only provide the honoraria for the chair?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
That's good enough, no? Um, then, let me say kung meron pa. Ah, 'yung libre ng tuition, 'yung ano, 'yung 'yung before letter H. Before letter H, 'yung libre and tuition. The officials mentioned in the preceding paragraph shall be exempt from paying tuition and mat- matriculation fees of their legitimate dependent children. Um, are we going to put some task of M B H T in providing guidelines for this? Or meron ang guidelines?
Well, ac- actually, Mr. Speaker, uh, at the moment, at right now, the tertiary education in public schools, um, would already be free, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Um, mukhang hindi naman ata, free lahat.
Free ang tuition, Mr. Speaker. Yes, state universities.
Clarification. Does the state distinguish, in, in, in these cases, does the state distinguish between illegitimate and legitimate children?
Because we patented after R A seventy-one sixty.
Di ba, di ba may, uh, there is already an amendment? There are already new laws regarding the recognition of children, acknowledgement of children.
Hmm.
Well, uh, we can work on the language, Mr. Speaker, but as I mentioned earlier, uh, even without this, tertiary education is already free in public, uh, state colleges and universities, Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
Think uh, it's, it's still good to put this provision because it's for the benefit of the children of the uh barangay officials. Uh, yeah. Uh, it would be uh a motivation for them to uh serve their uh constituents well.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Last na lang siguro to, four twenty, 'yung exception ng amicable settlement. Kuso kong itanong kung 'yung pagpatay, 'yung criminal act ay kasama sa exception, hindi ko nabasa.
Ano yun? Uh, section four two zero? Uh, lukon?
Yes, 'yung, 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 'yung amicable. So ibig sabihin, pwede mag-amicable, mas kinpatayan.
No, Mr. Speaker, the cases that are exempt uh are provided in yeah, exactly.
Yeah, four, four twenty, yeah. But it's not there.
And it says that under, can we go down? Offenses punishable by imprisonment exceeding one year or a fine exceeding five thousand pesos. So these are just, uh, s petty or minor crimes, uh, and excluding those where
Saan 'yung patay?
Wala, casta po, diretso na po siya.
Ito, hindi, ito kasi exempted to eh.
Kaya nga, exceeding one year. So that's exempted.
Exempted.
You go to court directly.
So ibig sabihin, 'yung mga nag-amicable ng patay ay dapat hindi nangyari yun. Kasi once we implement this, hindi na pwede yun. Bawal na.
Uh.
Bawal na.
It's already the law, right, right now. What, when uh parties enter into uh amicable settlement or alternative dispute resolutions, that would only cover the civil aspect of the crime, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. So, um, I'll end up here. Marami pa akong itatanong, but I promise that I'll be short. Uh, thank you very much, um, for giving me time, and I would like to congratulate the committee for coming up with a very comprehensive local government code.
Thank you, the lady from Maginanao del Norte, Adel Sure, rather.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, be- before I move to terminate the period of interpolation, Mr. Speaker, I would like to thank all members of the parliament who uh have stayed until uh this moment, either physically or, um, uh via Zoom, Mr. Speaker. So I move that we terminate the period of interpolation and debate.
There is a motion from the floor to terminate the period of interpolation and debate. It's been seconded. I'm hearing no objection. In the plenary or in the Zoom, the motion is approved.
I, that move to open the period of amendment, Mr.?
Yes, we will. There is now a motion to open the period of amendment. It's been seconded. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, uh, in the interest of time, um, I move that we suspend until Monday at one thirty P M and with a reminder to all
One thirty or morning?
Morning, ah. Mr. Speaker, I would like to modify. I move that we suspend until eight thirty of Monday, September twenty-five.
Uh, before I rule on the motion, uh, may I ask the secretariat if there are already proposed amendments submitted uh to the, to you? In view of the uh lone submission of the uh of, of proposed amendments, I will, uh, we will, we will suspend the period of uh amendment until eight thirty in the morning of uh, uh, September twenty-five, twenty twenty-three. So moved.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. May we recognize Deputy Speaker? Ah, okay. Mr. Speaker, one minute.
Uh, session suspended na ha?
May, may
Uh, uh what, what is that?
Mr. Speaker, uh, again, I would like to revert to the original time. Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend until one thirty in the afternoon of Monday, September twenty-five, Mr. Speaker.
That's fair, Aran. It's been seconded. There being no objection, the motion is approved.
I move to, uh, suspend pala. I move to picture, Mr. Speaker.